All right, I'm going to start. You guys good? Michelle, we good?
I told them at three, I got, yeah, I got three, yes.
Okay, welcome to the Leon County Commission meeting today, September the 29th, another fun-filled edition of Hollywood Squares. Before we get started, I'd like to do the prayer and then we will have the pledge and then we will go through the traditional statement from me as far as how we're meeting virtually. So if you don't mind, we'll pray briefly here. Father, we ask your blessings as we begin this important work ahead of us. Bless those elected to serve here. Give us the wisdom and good judgment in these uncertain times. Help us make the right decisions, maybe not the easy ones, that have a profound impact on people both from a healthcare and an economic basis. Thank you for the hardworking staff, for the frontline healthcare workers, for the first responders and for everyone in law enforcement. We pray for all those in harm's way, those touched by COVID-19 and their families. Protect them with your abiding presence. And finally, let us lead from our knees with a servant's heart. We ask this in your name, amen. And then if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance, a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so this is the statement that we read traditionally at the beginning of the meeting. Under Executive Order Number 20-69 issued by Governor DeSantis on March the 20th, 2020, authorize local governing bodies, including counties, to conduct meetings without having a quorum physically present or at any specific location. The executive order also authorized the use of communications media technology for virtual meetings such as audio and video conferencing. Executive Order Number 20-69 has been extended by subsequent executive orders, including most recently Executive Order Number 20-193. At this point, I will do a quick roll call of the commissioners and I'm going to do by visual here. Commissioner Maddox, and I see that you're muted, so just, I get a visual, I got it, yeah, you're good. Okay, Commissioner Lindley.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dozier.
Good to see everybody.
Welcome. Commissioner Minor.
Here.
And Commissioner Jackson.
Hey, right here.
All right, do we have Commissioner Proctor with us? Okay, so noted, okay. For the record, all the commissioners are attending this virtual regular meeting remotely using Zoom as the cloud platform for video and audio conferencing. If we experience interruptions through disruptions or glitches in the technology being used, I will recess the regular meeting until the interruption is resolved. If the interruption cannot be resolved in a reasonable amount of time, I will adjourn the regular meeting. The temporary recess or termination of the regular meeting, if necessary, is to ensure compliance with the sunshine law. The county attorney will be stating the procedures to be followed during this regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county issued amended proclamation 2020-7 on April 8th, 2020, to modify Board Policy Number 01-05 and temporarily establish procedures for the county to hold virtual meetings as authorized by Executive Order Number 20-69 and extended most recently by Executive Order Number 20-193. These procedural changes were ratified by the board at its meeting on February 14th, 2020. This virtual meeting has been noticed with information for the public to view the meeting in real time on Comcast Channel 16, Prism Channel 16 and 1016 HD, the Leon County Florida Channel on Roku, the county's Facebook page, YouTube channel and website. The notice invited members of the public to submit comment until 8:00 p.m. yesterday evening via the county's online comment forum and instructions were provided to explain how the public could submit comments. If anyone needed assistance submitting public comments, the notice provided a county phone number as a point of contact. The county did not receive any requests for assistance in submitting written public comments. The comments submitted through the comment form have been distributed to the commissioners for their consideration prior to any action being taken. These comments have also been posted on the county website so that they can be viewed by members of the public. Comments were received after the deadline and those comments have also been distributed to the board and posted to the county website. All comments received will be included in the public record of the meeting. In accordance with the direction from the commission at the September 15th, 2020 meeting, citizens interested in providing comments using communications media technology during this virtual meeting were instructed to register to provide comment by 8:00 p.m. yesterday evening. Those citizens who registered have been provided information to access the meeting using the Zoom platform as the communications media technology. Mr. Chairman, for their statement.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. So we will go straight to Claudia with the healthcare report.
Sure, I've got a little update prior to that.
It's all yours, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, at this time, I'd like to share with you just a brief update on our latest efforts related to COVID-19 as we've done at your meetings since the very beginning in our activation efforts. But like my previous updates to you, commissioners, you've been, this one will be brief because as you all know, you've been getting daily reports from me on the full scope of our efforts. And also tonight on your agenda, you've got quite a few COVID-related items, including an update on the county's reopening plan in light of the governor's executive order from last Friday, initiating Phase 3 of the state's reopening plan, as well as an update recommendations for enhancements to our Leon Cares program. Of course, you'll also be hearing from our county attorney as a follow-up on an issue that the board asked to be brought back related to our mask or face covering ordinance. But always, commissioners, we're happy to answer any specific questions you might have and our Health Department Director, Claudia Blackburn, as the chairman noted, is also on the call and will provide an update to you all on our latest public health information in just a moment. In summary, commissioners, however, at this time, we continue to be fully engaged in our public health response efforts to protect the health and safety of our citizens. The U.S. just in the last week or so surpassed 200,000 deaths and is still averaging nearly 1,000 deaths due to COVID per day. As you all know, the first day of fall was also this past week, which means the annual flu season is upcoming as well. And of course, this year's flu season could coincide with a second wave of the coronavirus. So at this time, we're still actively working to mitigate the spread of the virus by increasing testing capacity, coordinating with our healthcare community to assess hospital needs and distribute PPE and of course masks to our businesses and our citizens. In fact, as I've previously reported to you commissioners, we are now testing about 1,200 people per day on average, helped in large part by our Leon Cares program. Also, we continue to have adequate hospital capacity with enough space and ventilators to meet any potential projected surge in our healthcare needs and we're ready to execute our hospital surge plans should we need them. And of course, commissioners, we continue to drive critical public health messages throughout the community on a daily basis in partnership with the Florida Department of Health. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my brief update and on our responses related to COVID-19. And again, you'll be getting more information on the reopening Leon Cares item in just a few moments later in your agenda. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or hand it over to Claudia at this time for public health update. Claudia?
Yeah, commissioners, you have any questions with the administrator?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Dozier.
I had my hand raised actually for a procedural question. I was going to jump in before getting to this item. I will wait until after the update and I will save my questions for Claudia. Or after Claudia's presentation, thank you.
Okay. Claudia, I'll let you take it away unless anybody else is out there that has questions. And I don't see a hand raised or anybody waving to me. So Claudia, you're on.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you, county administrator. That was a great update. I'll try to add to that just a little bit. So I want to tell you about the situation in Leon County for the last week. So if you compare our cases roughly per 100,000 population to the nation and to the state, it shows that we have in Leon County about two and a half times the state rate, which is about two-thirds of the national rate. So Florida has a lower rate per 100,000 than the nation for the last week. And Leon has a rate that is about two and a half times the state rate for the last week. So that is a reflection of the surge in cases in the 18 to 24-year group that you're real familiar with, the college-age population. That said, our two-week look shows that we are trending in the right direction. So I want to share that with you. This is Leon's Week 39 report. It's from September 20th to the 26th. And our total cases in Leon County residents, 1,000, or 10,185. And then we had 69 deaths in Leon County residents. That was through the, as of the 28th. So that does not include today's numbers. The positivity rate for the last two weeks has been 6.56%. And we went from 8.7% Week 38 to 4.87% in Week 39. So we're definitely going in the right direction. And the same thing, obviously, with our cases. We went, we've been at 93 per day for the past two weeks, 116 per day for Week 38, down to 69 per day for Week 39. For the past weeks, we have seen most of our cases in the 18 to 24-year range, about 51%. That actually is a decrease from what we were seeing before. And if you remember, I think I told you I was going to be watching, we were going to be watching to see if we started to see an uptick in any, in the, you know, older populations. And we're seeing a slight uptick, but because the numbers have gone down so much, there's really nothing significant there. Also, this age group that has, you know, been, the bulk of the cases has not been, we haven't seen hospitalizations, we haven't seen severe illness. So that is really great. I also just wanted to comment, for K through 12, when we look at the two weeks before school starts, started, and then the two weeks after school started, we did not see any kind of change really in trends. So the schools really have done a great job in terms of, you know, managing to keep COVID at at least the same level as it was, which was pretty low level for that age group. Not so for the colleges and universities. As we all know, there was a dramatic increase following the start of in-person classes on August 24th. That has peaked and seems to be coming down. So that's also good news. As Vince said, testing continues to be robust at 1,424 tests per day for the last two weeks. So we're doing a really good job. So when we look at our positivity rate, it is based on a lot of tests. And the average turnaround time for those tests has been about two days. Influenza-like illness has increased a little bit in our emergency departments, but again, not anything different than what we've seen in the last four years. And COVID-like illness visits to the emergency departments has been decreasing. So that is good news. I also wanted to share a little bit about ZIP Code data because I know that Commissioner Jackson is interested in 32304 and 32301. And...
Yeah, Claudia, Claudia, it's 32304, sorry to interrupt. Mr. Chairman?
32301, oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, that's fine, go ahead.
No, we're good.
I'm sorry, I said it wrong. I'm trying to find my notes, they got a little scrambled here. So I can tell you that 32304 does have the highest case rate of all the ZIP Codes in Leon County. So far, 3,011 cases for a rate of 63 cases per 1,000 population. That's cumulative, that's not in the last two weeks. Now, 60% of the population in 32304 is enrolled in post-secondary school and the median age is 21.8. So, you know, that correlates with what we're seeing with the surge in university-related cases. 35% are black and 11% are uninsured and 55% are living below poverty. So we are, you know, all familiar with the profound issues associated with social determinants of health in 32304. But I think we have a pretty good understanding of why we're seeing so many cases there. And then 32310 has seen 644 cases for a case rate of 41 per 1,000. And the median age is 31.1 with 29% living below poverty, 50% black and 10% uninsured. And then the third ZIP Code that has the next highest level of cases is 32308. And, excuse me. We are seeing 42 points, excuse me, that's not right, 32308, we're seeing 34.62 cases per 1,000 population. So those are the three ZIP Codes that have the highest case rate or cases per 1,000. I also wanted to share some information with you, if you want it now or I can share it later, about Halloween because I understand that there have been some questions about what the recommendations for Halloween are going to be. But Vince, if you'd like me to wait on that or Mr. Chairman, I can, I can...
I'd say, Claudia, in the moment, go ahead, I'd be curious, yeah. Because I'm working out my costume and I need to make sure, no, sorry.
Just make sure you have a mask and you'll be awesome. No, actually, I think, you know, we're going to hear more about the recommendations and we'll be doing, we'll be sending information out to educate folks. There are great guidelines on the CDC website. But in general, given, you know, where we are in our community right now, and that could change by the end of the month, the recommendations are that events be short, that they not drag on for hours. They be short events that are outdoors, less than 10 people. Stick with people who are generally together. So if your children are going to school or daycare with a certain cohort, a certain group of people, that they, they kind of stick with those people that they're generally with and not start mixing in a lot of people that they, that they're not generally around. You want to be sure that the social distancing can be adhered to, hand hygiene, masks, which should be fairly easy for Halloween. And that people at high risk of developing severe illness, if they were to become infected with COVID, avoid those kinds of gatherings. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. It's not, not a lot of new information. And we'll, again, we'll work on our messaging and get that out to all of you and the public just as soon as possible.
Okay, I got Commissioner Dozier had a question, then Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Dozier, you had something for Claudia earlier?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Claudia, it's good to see you. And it's kind of administrator, thank you for your updates. I know that, I assume we're going to be talking about this later with some of our agenda items, particularly the item 24 in reference to the governor's executive order. But I just wanted to give you an opportunity to let us know what the guidance is from Florida Department of Health about masks, regardless of fines or anything else that may be under discussion. It is my understanding that nothing has changed with the recommendations from Florida Department of Health and CDC. Is that right? And could you tell us what their recommendations are?
Correct, nothing has changed that I'm aware of. The state surgeon general still has a public health advisory out that does recommend wearing face coverings when around other people and also maintaining the social distancing, hand hygiene and avoiding gatherings of more than 10 people. So that is still what the state surgeon general's public health advisory says. And, you know, we know that masks make a difference. Then if you become infected with COVID, if you had a mask on, you're probably going to get fewer of the virus particles and you're more likely to have mild symptoms or no symptoms at all. So that, you know, they do help. They help cut down the inoculum that comes out of the person wearing the mask in the inoculum that is inhaled or hits the person that... the target inadvertently, I'm sure. But, so masks still work. I mean, that's something we need to continue to do.
Okay, thank you for that. And the CDC, I mean, obviously, we heard the director say this two weeks ago that masks may be more beneficial to us than a vaccine at this point or even when a vaccine is developed because the logistics of producing enough vaccine for our country, for other countries, distributing that, that masks still may help us for the same reasons you just articulated. Is that right?
I believe that is correct. I mean, we have to use all the tools available to us, masks, social distancing, hygiene, and when we get a vaccine, a vaccine.
One, many tools, yes. Well, in the same vein, and I'm asking this question because we're in a public forum. We've got a lot of interest in this particular meeting on these subjects, as always, the last six months, but particularly today. And it does strike me that in recent weeks, we've crossed the 10,000 threshold for Leon County of COVID cases. We've crossed a million globally. More significantly, I think, is 200,000, we crossed, you know, 200,000 deaths in the U.S. I keep getting questions about the morbidity rates and how most people can weather this illness without a lot of complications. Could you just remind us briefly, and really, the million cases stood out, that this COVID-19 by public health professionals is still seen as a different type of coronavirus than we would see annually during flu season or other types of illness? Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, and there's still a lot we don't know about it. And that's the thing, we don't know. And so it is mostly people with underlying medical conditions that really develop severe illness. None of us really know exactly how it will affect us if we're infected.
Okay, and lastly, just to reiterate, and I'm sure you'll appreciate this, everybody needs to get a flu shot right now because we don't want to have flu, regular flu and COVID-19 happening at the same time. Is that right?
Yes, thank you for that commercial, I was going to say that. And I didn't enough, I really like people, we'd really like people to have their flu shot by the end of October.
Okay, well, thank you very much, appreciate it, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Dozier. I've got Commissioner Proctor followed by Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Proctor, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners, thank you all, glad to see everybody. Mr. Chairman, I decided this year for Halloween, I just wasn't going to wear a mask. I was just going, go, you know, as is and see what...
That's Bill Proctor.
Yes, sir, and scare somebody. I want to ask Ms. Claudia, that as we're getting closer to November's election, miraculously, our numbers are going down. As we get closer to November 3rd's election, it seems that reporting is drying up. Is there a segregated report from Florida State's campus? And they're not mixed in the numbers that you're giving us, we are in county. And if so, please tell us why these numbers are being pulled and segregated as opposed to giving us the accurate picture of what's going on in Leon County?
They are not being pulled and segregated. They are part of our overall numbers, which is, you know, as you saw, the increase in cases in 18 to 24-year-olds. There is, there's no other report that I'm aware of. Now, we are not reporting individual school, college or university data. They're reporting that on their own. If at some point the state health department decides to report that, then we'll have that information. But right now, it is included in our overall numbers.
So your university numbers are reflected in what you're telling our board, the entirety of Leon County?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, Claudia, I had asked the question at the last meeting. So first off, I wanted to thank you for doing your homework and reporting back. I appreciate the information. I think it's important that I highlight 32304 and 32310, where each of those ZIP Codes have half of those families that are suffering from poverty conditions, black, white, Hispanic, disproportionately economically disadvantaged folks that have had to make tough choices between safety and their economic well-being and earning a living. I think it's important that we point that out because each of those folks in those, not each of those, but many of the folks in that, in those ZIP Codes are the people that I represent and they represent essential workers in the lines of work that they do and the services they provide to all of us. I think it's important that we point that out, that it's not, it is disproportionately attacking economically disadvantaged demographic racial groups, Hispanics as well as African-Americans and also the elderly, who may be multi-generational families living in homes in those ZIP Codes due to economic concerns. Draw all your attention to that and ask for any advice or any willingness to provide more services in those two areas, strictly because we serve those children every single day in our schools and one of every two come from a home that is experiencing poverty, below the minimum guidelines for poverty, 49% in 32304 and 47% in 32310. I think it's important that we highlight that to all of my fellow commissioners but also any of the listening audience that's tuning into today's meeting. Thanks for the update. And one out of every three being from 32304 or 32310 is something we all should be paying attention to. So thank you.
All right, I've got Commissioner Lindley up next, Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thanks, Claudia. It's good to see the numbers going down, I think demonstrating that the masks work. I really hope I'm not rushing things a little bit, but really appreciate all of the people who are weighing in today supporting the mask ordinance that we have in place. And I was just interested in emphasizing and the governor's executive order, which speaks in a sense to our ordinance. And it says that we, that local governments can, must suspend the collection of fines and penalties. It doesn't say they're banned, so it is a temporary thing. So our ordinance, as I understand it, and in consultation with County Attorney Osteen, the governor's order still allows local governments such as ours to have our mask ordinances, our mask mandates in place. And if we aren't collecting penalties, collections are suspended, they're not obliterated or banned. Is that correct, Ms. County Attorney? I just wanted to speak to that real quickly.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner Lindley, you are correct.
Yeah, go ahead, the administrator, yeah.
And, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And commissioners, I just wanted to weigh back in for just a minute to add on to what Claudia said. As usual, Claudia did a great job explaining this and responding to Commissioner Proctor's question and some of the other commissioners have noted the downward trajectory. I just wanted to add some context to that. It's down over the last two weeks when we experienced our all-time high or one of our all-time highs, two weeks after students came back and after the Labor Day holiday. Our numbers are still where they were back in August. So it's very important to note that that down... are still where they were back in August. So it's very important to note that that downward trend is coming off of a peak over the last two weeks. To put in context, we are still where we were or above where we were when we put in place some of our strongest mitigation efforts in the community. And I think that's just an important note to add to all this. And I just wanted to be recognized for a moment to make that note. Thank you.
Commissioner Lindley, anything else? Okay. Anybody else? Claudia, let me weigh in real quickly and say thank you very much. This has been a long haul, and you've been a rock star. I don't think anybody a year ago would have anticipated the amount of work. And then my hat's off, let me extend that thanks out to staff, who I don't think people realize that when this started, seven months ago now, what are we in, eight months ago? You know, there are staff at the county that have worked every day since this started, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So we are lucky to have people that are that dedicated in our community that are willing to step up. So thank you, Vince, for you and your team. And Claudia, you guys have been on the front line. So thanks so much. I think Commissioner Lindley makes a great point, though. Although the Governor has said we can't collect fines, he also, as you pointed out, the Department of Health still points to the point that masks are appropriate. And frankly, I would expect that our mask mandate stays in place, but that's for later discussion. All right, from a logistics standpoint, I'm going to outline, we've got, Claudia, do you have anything else? I don't mean to cut you off if you're not done.
The only other thing is just to remind people that it's great that people are wearing their masks, but please make sure that you're wearing it appropriately, that it's covering the nose, the mouth, and that there's as tight a fit as possible, because we still see a lot of people that are wearing it down here or down here. So that's all.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dozier, you wanted to weigh back in?
Apologies, Mr. Chair. I do have a question about the agenda sequence and public comment. I've been trying to slip in, yeah.
Yeah, let me tell you. Yeah, let me tell you what we're, what we're going to do. So we will take public comment in front of consent, okay? Because there are a couple of people in the queue that have got some comments relative to consent. And we've got a couple of items on consent that were polled. So we're going to take public comment prior to taking up the consent agenda. And then I'm going to exercise the chair's prerogative, because I think the majority, the majority of the people want to get into the meat of the add-on agenda item, which deals with the Governor's Executive Order. So I'm going to take that in general business and put it at the front of our general business. So we'll take public comment, we'll deal with consent, and there have been a couple of items pulled from consent. Then we will roll into general business, of which I will take the add-on agenda item as the first one. And that, is that answer your question, Commissioner Dozier? That's?
In, in part, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead. If you've got, you want to add something to that?
Just to clarify.
I'm sorry, just, just
I'm sorry, mine was on.
I just want, I mean, since he just made the point of wanting to make the agenda modification, I don't think it's a bad idea. Just so we're in good, good, good order, I was going to make the motion for the agenda modification as the chairman has specified.
Commissioner Maddox, can I ask a question first before we get into motions?
Go ahead and ask your question, and then we'll, Nick asks a good motion. Yeah, go ahead.
And I'm not sure, I didn't know if we needed a motion to move that. It's chair's prerogative. But I would second Commissioner Maddox's motion if we get there. So, item 24, we are taking, let me back up. We are taking public comments on non-agended items or consent upfront. But for agended items, we're going to have public comments at the start of each agenda item?
No, we're going to take
Public comment period?
Yeah, no, we're going to take one, because there's a little bit of a learning curve here, and IT's been working to make sure this goes well. We're going to take all of the public comment upfront. We've got about 15, 20 people lined up. And so we will do that before consent, before general business. And Commissioner Maddox, to your point, I don't, since I'm not changing the agenda, I'm just moving the order of the items, I don't think it requires a motion. At least that's, Madam Attorney, is that, do I need?
That's right.
Okay, all right, yeah. But thank you for keeping an eye out. Commissioner Dozier, does that answer your question?
No, sir, I haven't actually gotten to a question yet.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and now I'm going to turn it into a comment. So we didn't actually, I guess, talk about how to take public comment. The county's style is to take comment before each agenda item. The city has lumped it in the beginning at times, and they shifted. So if for logistics sake, we're taking it all upfront, I understand that. But I do believe there were citizens that thought our public comment was going to be for each individual agenda item, as we have done in the past. So I, I just wonder if anyone mentioned that in their comments when they registered? The other question I have, Mr. Chair, which I think you just spoke to, if all comments are upfront, this may be a moot point, but I was told by some folks that they could not register to speak on item 24, because it had been added late yesterday, and they were in the registration process for item 24. That gave me the impression that people were signing up to register, to speak on individual agenda items. So again, I'm, you all have your approach, but I think we need some clarity on this, because what you just introduced is, I guess, highlighting why a lot of citizens were confused when we're asking questions today. I see now why they were confused. So comments or clarity on that?
Vince, you want to weigh in? Yeah.
Sure, be happy, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we had one person, one who registered to speak on item 24. We were just asking citizens on which items they wanted to speak, for the purposes of knowing how many items they wish to speak on, in case the chairman wanted to allow them extra time to speak at the beginning. The only reason they're all here at the beginning of the agenda was so that citizens didn't have to wait, especially with the challenges of technology, that they didn't have to wait to be tired of meetings to do so. However, that's something the board would like to change in the future, be very happy to follow that direction.
Yeah, let me just weigh in and say, I mean, as you, we're taking public comment, and if somebody feels like they haven't gotten their chance, I'm sure we can still add somebody to the back. It is too late to add somebody now? I mean, if somebody called now and said, okay, all right. So, I mean, but there's, there is a little bit of a learning curve here. And certainly, Commissioner Dozier, you make a good point. In normal times, when we're in the chambers and we've got people there, it's pretty easy to shuffle people up and back based on the agenda item. It's a little less easy now, when you've got to somehow do it from a technology standpoint. And we've all sat through meetings where that kind of thing. So we're trying to be as accommodating as we can. So the idea would be, everybody gets their time at the front end. And the other part of it is, they don't have to wait. You know, they can say however they feel about the particular issue, and then we can get through it. I made the decision to move the, what I think is the meat of the meeting tonight, which is the add-on, to the front of the agenda for the same reason, because I don't think it's fair to have the public speak at, you know, whatever, at 3:30 in the afternoon, and maybe not get a chance to actually hear the debate for another couple hours. So I want to make sure we kind of accommodate that. So, yes, Madam Attorney.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry, just wanted to clarify a case that under our policy 1.5, our 5, section K, departure for any departure for the order that's proposed agenda, only upon majority voted.
So I do need, okay, all right. So Commissioner Maddox, you've got your hand up, and I would welcome a motion to that extent.
Mr. Chair, so actually, before I make the motion, what was the motion that you were looking for? I actually had another point I wanted to speak on. It was more in the line of kind of what Commissioner Dozier was saying. But I think the motion that you were looking for was in relation to speaking before agenda items. I'm okay with that? What was the motion looking for?
No, it's the, it's reshuffling the order of the, of the items in the general business.
Moving agenda items.
Okay, moving 24 to the front, yeah.
Yeah, that is definitely a modification. Thank you for the clarification that you consider. And I know it could make for a longer meeting, but if people want to speak on multiple items, that we continue in the practices that we have before, and allow them that three minutes per item, I know this is totally a discretion, but I do think it would be what we usually do. And I, and I get it, this is something that we're new, newer trying to do. But I actually had the expectation too, and I know we're putting all up front, but that as items came, folks would be able to come on per item. But I get now how that can be a little bit more complicated. So I'm asking for your, your, your discretion or your, your consideration on giving people three minutes per item. And I will make that motion for the agenda modification of moving item number 24 to the front of general business.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and dispose of that unless there's more discussion on that. But then we can talk about the discussion piece, if that's okay. Any other discussion on the change of the agenda? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, so that's the shuffle of the agenda. Commissioner Dozier, you wanted to weigh back in?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I, I know this is a complicated issue. I appreciate Commissioner Maddox's comments there. I, what I was leading to was, people have been waiting for six months to get real-time comments. And I think the, asking them when they registered which item they wanted to speak on may have led to this confusion, and the fact that, as Commissioner Maddox just said, and I said before, this is how the county has always done it. So I, I will echo Commissioner Maddox's comments. And if we need a motion to provide people more time, if they want to speak on multiple items, I would make that motion or second it. I'd like to hear your perspective on that, Mr. Chair. Mostly, I am ready to move on with the meeting, but these logistical issues needed to be addressed upfront, because we do have a lot of confusion. The technology is challenging, but we need to be more clear than ever in what we're, what options are allowed, you know, we take, what aren't. So, um.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, no, and your point is well-taken, Commissioner Dozier. I mean, the reality is, we have struggled to make sure that we try and embody as much public input as possible. But there's also some limitations we're trying to deal with. We have one person who's asked to speak on multiple items. Let me ask staff, is it logistically impossible for that person to speak? Or, I mean, I, I'm fine, I was going to make a statement at the beginning of this that says, please be conscious of the three minutes. But if they've got multiple things, what my fear is, that somebody decides to sign up for 10 different items, and they have 30 minutes of speech, which is, is okay to a degree. But you and I both know, we need to make sure we manage this. So in effort to try and, what I, here's what I would ask. Can we look at doing this by the next meeting, where we can ask, embed it into every item? Okay, I'm, I'm guessing based on the eyes, the looks I'm getting and the feedback I'm getting, that probably, logistically, tonight, it might be a bit difficult. I will make a statement before we go to the speakers, and I will give the person who has multiple some latitude. But some is a relative word, and we'll just have to play it by ear. Is that, is that fair, Commissioner Dozier? I'm trying to figure out where that middle ground is here.
Mr. Chair, I thought we had this worked out at the last meeting. And so, changing it midstream, I think the challenges, the misunderstanding is, we've articulated that, we need to address it for the next meeting. We may be back in person for the next meeting, depending on
Absolutely.
You know, if the governor doesn't extend the executive order in the next few days. So we can move forward, but I will just register my disappointment with having to work through these types of issues upfront here and having confusion, because you're right, it has been a struggle. But I think everyone knows this has been, every meeting is a new challenge for us for the last six months. And our IT folks and our staff, Mr. County Administrator, have done a great job. So let's, let's go. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, these are trying times. Anything else before we move forward? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, one last thing.
Go ahead, Commissioner Maddox.
I didn't hear, but are you going to allow people who didn't have an opportunity to sign up for 24 to speak on item number 24?
Well, we had one person sign up for multiple items. And so we, I'm, I'm willing to give that person some latitude time-wise, so that if they want to go beyond the three minutes. But we only had one person ask for multiple items. And the idea would be, everybody gets three minutes. This person had a couple of different topics they wanted to speak on.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, my last comment, there was, I talked to a constituent today, just said that the notification to speak on, the 424 came after the actual last opportunity to sign up, to speak for it. If staff would just address that, so we put it out in the air on what happened there, then I would appreciate that. But I don't want, I don't want the misconception, I don't want the information to be out there that people didn't have an opportunity to speak on the item.
Let, let me be very clear. We contacted the person after we heard, we asked them if they'd like to speak. We've got them listed here to speak on item 24.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure we, we got that covered, because I want everybody to be able to speak on the item if they like to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You want to weigh in? Yeah.
So the
Go ahead, go ahead.
So the deadline to submit a form or request to speak was 8 p.m. last night. When was the add-on agenda item posted yesterday?
Late afternoon.
So there was time before the deadline for someone to sign up to speak on agenda number 24?
Yeah.
For the deadline? Okay.
Yeah, we live in an imperfect world. I mean, this is, we're trying to be as accommodating as we can. These are good comments, and we, and I, I hear the same thing. So, and, but staff's also working within certain limitations. Okay. We've got a modified agenda. I've got a statement I'm going to read here, because we're going to go straight to speakers from here. Am I right, Mr. Administrator? Okay. So, before I hand it over to the county administrator to provide directions for the individuals who have been called in to speak, I want to remind all the speakers that although you are not appearing in person, general decorum and civility, as set forth in the Board's Rule of Procedures for Meetings, are still required, and that any comments or language which are out of order will not be tolerated. Any speaker who violates the rules of decorum and civility will be muted, and the remainder of the speaker's time will be forfeited, just as if the speaker were in attendance at commission chambers. I would also point out to the conversation we just finished, which is, some of you have signed up, or one person in particular signed up for multiple items. And I would like to keep, I mean, I'm willing to give them some latitude, but let's just be conscious of that. With that, I would ask the county administrator to call on citizens wishing to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, Commissioners, we will now take virtual public comments, as directed by the Board specifically. And you gave us some latitude on this, to be able to accommodate citizens either by phone, or by voice, or by video. We were able to do both. So that option was available. And Commissioners, prior to the meeting, all registrants have received instructions on how to participate. But I'll do a quick refresher now. So as a reminder to all callers, you will be identified by your name and asked to provide your comments. For those joining by video, you may experience a few-second transition as we begin, as we bring you into the meeting. When you're asked to speak, you'll be added to the meeting and will be prompted to unmute your device, and if you choose to activate video. Again, you'll receive an automated prompt to unmute your device. Once prompted, please state your name and address for the record. And again, the chairman has advised relative to the, the time for each speaker. As you experience, if you experience technical difficulties during your call, please bear with us. If unresolved, that will, we will move on to the next speaker. So thank you for that. And with that, I will now call on our first speaker, Danielle Irwin.
Hi, good afternoon, Danielle Irwin, 3185 Ferns Glen Drive. I am speaking with you today on behalf of the Proposed Fertilizer Ordinance, Agenda Number 11. And I would like to encourage you to adopt this ordinance without hesitation, to become aligned with the state model ordinance and the city's ordinance. Non-point source pollution, such as stormwater, is a significant factor in the degradation of water quality of our natural water bodies. It's disappointing that this ordinance does not go further. I take issue with the staff's claim that there is inadequate documentation of impairment in our water bodies. Four natural water bodies in the county are currently documented as impaired under state standards, like Munson, Munson-Sloo, Waculla River, Black Creek. Lake Jackson was recently delisted. And furthermore, the state is now trying to list the chain of lakes in Kalarna Estates as impaired for phosphorus. The impairment of the Waculla River and downstream Waculla Springs has been documented in the B map, with turf grass fertilizer representing 12%, not 10%, 12%. And that is not a small amount, considering that nearly 50% of the impairment within the B map is from things that are outside of our control, atmospheric deposition, as well as farmland that's regulated under FDAS. The other large contributor to impairment in the B map, of course, is the septic The other large contributor to impairment in the B map, of course, is the septic systems that attributes 34% of the impairment, and they're very costly to retrofit and swap out in favor of sewage pipes. So that leaves this 12% from turf grass fertilizer as a very important factor that we have the ability as a community to influence. At some point, I hope we have a broader community discussion that will happen around reducing the amount of grassed lawn spaces, since they are more needy of fertilizers to stay green without also providing the ecosystem functions associated with native plants, such as supporting pollinators and wildlife. Furthermore, I've requested you direct staff to work collaboratively with the city on ways to self-regulate the application of practices that we do as a county and as a city in our public spaces. We have more control over the fertilizer applications done under contracts to the city and county on our own public land. I would like to see full transparency and forward-thinking management of our county-owned projects and property that go beyond the proposed fertilizer ordinance. For example, we should be using native low-maintenance plants that require little fertilizer pesticide and irrigation. We should specify slow re- fertilizer on all ball fields, medians, rightaways, and other landscaping needs, and consider limiting the application during the wet season, particularly south of the Cody Scarp. Uh, and then also consider prohibiting phosphate application. Um, for a moment, I'll just branch over to fertilizer use. We should also consider prohibiting the use of glyco phosphate, that was my timer, or glyphosate, the chemical found in Ron, Roundup, for more reasons than I have to discuss here today than I have time to discuss. And then finally, finally, our irrigation method on our public spaces should be considered too. Drip irrigation is the most energy-efficient way of irrigating our land. So with that, I'll pause.
Thank you, Danielle, and thank you for the timer there. I guess we've got a, a side ti, um, okay, next up, Mr. County Administrator.
Next speaker is Mr. Jody Waltholm.
I'm Jody Waltholm, 2239 Ellicott Drive. I'm a lifelong resident of Tallahassee, representing the local Appalachia Audubon Society and a local garden center, native nurseries, where I worked for 40 years. We sell organic fertilizer at the nursery, but try to educate our customers on its proper use and adverse environmental effects. The proposed change to the ordinance is based on science from IFAS for what is best for lawns. These recommendations are not what is best for our aquifer and the health of our springs or any other water body, including the Gulf of Mexico. The proposed ordinance is not strong enough. We should look at Alachua County and Indian River Counties ordinances as examples for our new ordinance. Though penalties can be applied to people who break the law, Alachua County's success is really in its effort at educating citizens. Their website features a very effective promotion of, quote, "Join the 55% of people who do not fertilize their lawns." A local example of a similar promotion in Leon County was the TAP Scoop the Poop Media Blitz. This was a very effective program at educating the public, and a similar blitz could be used on fertilizers to educate our citizens. We are blessed in Leon County with beautiful lakes and rivers, which have a huge economic impact through recreation and tourism. What is more important, a lush lawn or healthy water bodies? Excess fertilizer has another name, pollution. Personally, I have not fertilized my lawn in 30 years, and it is lush and green. If you must pass something today, pass the proposed changes, but Leon County needs to go farther. We need more protection for our water bodies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody.
The next speaker is Max Epstein.
Hello?
We hear you.
Hey, hey. Thank you very much. My name is Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Court. I hope you give me a couple extra minutes, because I'd like to respond to the COVID update. Um, I'd like to start with the cemetery, the McKisskey Greenway Cemetery. Um, I haven't been able to look at the agenda item, but we need to do everything we can to be respectful of that site and to continue to look throughout Willany and the county to look for important cultural sites to preserve, and this includes environmental sites, um, as well. As far as the COVID update goes, I'd like to know if anyone can answer, are we using the FDOH positive rate or the Johns Hopkins rate? Because currently, the state of Florida, FDOH, is only counting, um, the negative, uh, retests, not positives, so it artificially lowers our positivity rate. For example, it's about 5% statewide, uh, 12 to 13% according to Johns Hopkins, so that would make a big difference here in Leon County. But I am here to talk primarily about the fertilizer ordinance. I'm happy to hear someone say, um, Indian River County, I've been sending you their fertilizer ordinance. Um, merely updating to the state standards, the state laws, is not far enough. Um, we need to model our, and I'd like to request that we model our fertilizer ordinance after, uh, Indian River County or Alachua County, but the biggest thing that we can do right now is to ban, uh, fertilizers in the wet season. And like Danielle said, 12% to the, um, Waculla Springs B map, uh, goes from urban fertilizers. That's over 300,000 pounds of nitrogen per year. And, now, I did just a little thinking about it. What if this new ordinance and the ban in the wet season, how much could we save? One in five pounds, maybe 20%? That's 60,000 pounds of fertilizer that would be actually removed, not deposited somewhere else, but removed out of the chain. And if you look at how much it costs, I did send a comment to a couple of you, it costs about $100 to remove a pound of nitrogen. That's actually new technologies like the Algo, Alko turf scrubber or these managed aquatic plant systems. If you actually go back and look at the Boynton Still Pond in 2016, the report says that the cost of construction is $2,366 per pound of nitrogen. This shows that...
Got about, got about 10 seconds, sir.
Okay, well, I would appreciate an extra minute or two, uh, at the discretion of the chair, because I need to, there's no way to have public comment on multiple items in three minutes.
I, I don't think you asked for multiple items, Max.
Yeah, but if, if we came in into a public meeting, we could sign up today to speak on whatever we wanted to speak on.
I'll give you a minute. Go ahead.
Okay. So, using that 2,366 calculation times 60,000 pounds, that's $142 million it would cost to use man-made means to eliminate that, that, um, 60,000 pounds, so. It's just really important that we get this right and we ban during the wet season. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Max. And Max, to your earlier comment about the Department of Health, I would suggest you email any one of us, and we could probably get the information from Claudia who was on earlier. So if you want to ask the question in an email, it'd probably be quicker to get you an answer that way. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Administrator.
The next speaker, Dr. Adrian Wright.
Name and address for the record.
Now, now, I think we can hear you now.
Yes, good afternoon. I am Adrian Wright, and I am here to comment on general business item number 13, status update and recommended enhancements to the Leon Cares Expenditure Plan. I am founder and president of Abalita Consulting. We are a company based here in Tallahassee, and one month ago, we celebrated eight years in business. This is a significant milestone for us, uh, especially against this statistics showing that 45% of businesses fail within the first five years. 2019 was a banner year for us, also in terms of significant growth, new clients, with, uh, plans to expand even more. And so, the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic are unprecedented, and the continuing effects are certainly beyond anything that we could have imagined. We are extremely thankful for the support of the Leon County Cares Grant. I commend the Leon County Commissioners, the staff, the Office of Economic Vitality for its leadership and support of Leon County businesses through the Leon Cares Expenditure Plan, and especially the support and the inclusion of certified businesses here in Leon County. I'm here today to, again, express support of the Office of Economic Vitality's proposal to enhance the Leon Cares Expenditure Plan for certified businesses in Leon County. Expanding funding support to cer, to support certified firms will not only increase our resiliency, but it gives us an opportunity to pivot and operate in this new environment. So I ask for your approval and support of the request presented here today for the enhancement of the Leon Cares Expenditure Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next speaker is Kristi Hale. Okay, I've been notified that, um, Ms. Hale is no longer, uh, is not with us on the, on the call. Uh, moving to the next speaker, Katrina Tugerson. Item 13 as well.
Good evening, Katrina.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
It's raining outside. Um, but I just wanted to come and say, um, I wanted to support the 13. Um, the Capital City Chamber has had the advantage to work with you side-by-side with the Leon Cares. Um, with that being said, we support the, um, the, the amounts that are coming before you for the increase. Um, what we've seen with the Capital City Chamber is to fill the gap, um, whether Leon cares and support what the businesses are doing. So we, I just want to make this publicly known, I don't know who's all watching, but to fill that gap, what the Capital City Chamber has done, we have, um, offered bookkeeping services to tho, to those businesses to help them get the documents prepared and also legal services as well. So we've had the opportunity to fill a gap there and help them get the paperwork that's needed, and we wanted to say thank you. Um, and the increases that are coming on board will absolutely make them upscale to the next level, and we will be there to support. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Katrina. Good comments. Next up.
Uh, the next speaker, um, registered for agenda item number 15, is Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioner. Good.
Good, good. I, I had to say thank you. I know, uh, many times as commissioners, we don't get, many folks come by to say thank you, but I'm coming by to say thank you for adding to your agenda, uh, item number 15, to have a discussion about celebrating, um, a holiday to, to honor the history of, uh, what happened here in the state of Florida in the freeing of slaves. Uh, we celebrate May 20th, uh, Emancipation Day, and have done so since, um, 1865 or 1867 thereupon, and so we appreciate the fact that you're, uh, looking at this and looking at ways to further honor this, uh, great tradition. This year, we had to do it virtually, but, uh, we've done this, uh, almost every year. And I know that your discussion has been around Juneteenth. We have no issue with, uh, folks celebrating Juneteenth if they choose to, because that is, uh, when the word got to Texas. The word got to Tallahassee, Florida, on May 20th, 1865, and we're hoping that we will be able to continue that tradition in the state of Florida to recognize Emancipation Day as the day that, uh, we got the word here in, um, in Florida. So I wanted to say thank you for even having it on your agenda, um, to study it. We are working together, many of us in our community, the Historical Society, as well as the Riley House with Ms. Altamis Barnes. We're trying to correct some history, not only at the local level, but also at the state level, because our Florida statute has, has some incorrect information in there regarding when slaves were actually freed in the state of Florida. So again, thank you for even putting it on the agenda. Thank you for considering it, and I, I look forward to your discussion, and I am hopeful that you will choose May 20th, um, as our day of, of, for the holiday and for the celebration. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. You can come back anytime with that kind of news. Next up, Mr. Administrator.
Next speaker, uh, on, uh, non-agenda items, uh, is Alicia Waller. We hear you loud and clear.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you. Um, I'm Alicia Waller, um, from A701 Freedom Road, Tallahassee, Florida. Um, I have a couple things that won't take long. It, it seems as if the county commissioners are, um, on opposing sides of the governor. Um, as of, uh, today, he actually posted the survival rate of the COVID-19 for 0 to 19 years of age, 99.997%, um, 20 to 49 years of age, 99.98%, and 50 to 69 years of age, 99.5% survivability. Um, and as what has been decided in, in our recent days, uh, fall sports has not commenced for the county. That should not be, um, the kids that are, um, obviously are very low-risk in this category. There are also, per his mandate on Friday, um, we are on phase three. Large groups gathering should be coming back to normal. Amusement parks are now open to full capacity. Um, and also, the, this meeting itself should be in-person, because that was actually within, um, one of the things that was stated on Friday. So, all of those things, um, if you guys would consider, uh, um, thinking over those things, and, um, and one last item, the city will be moving forward with fall sports, so it seems also contradictory to what the county is doing. Um, it would be nice if, if we were on the same page. Thank you for, um, listening to my comments. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Susan MacLeod on non-agenda items.
Hi.
Hello, Susan. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Susan MacLeod, and I reside at 801 Chestwood Avenue in Tallahassee, and I am a retired pharmacist, and I'd like to voice my apprehension, uh, of the upcoming, un, of the uncertainty of the upcoming November 3rd national elections, and I urge the Leon County Commission to adopt a resolution supporting free and fair national elections, and also to reject any attempt to negate the valid results. Because as you may have read, um, the president has repeatedly announced his planned coup of our elections, but in the words of the late Molly Ivans, she said, "We are the deciders. We are the people who run this country." And therefore, as duly-elected commissioners live at Leon County, representing the residents of Leon County, Florida, you must refuse to recognize any government which announces victory, not through legal elections, but via voter suppression, refusing to count legal ballots, declaring victory in advance of counting the votes, seizing control of national electors by state houses, and by any other measures outside of regular known ballot counting. So I'm just asking the Leon County Commission to consider adopting a resolution that, uh, we will not recognize any government formed by those who organize and execute a coup of our free and fair national elections. And that's it.
Thank you, Susan. Appreciate it. Next up.
All right, goodbye.
The next speaker is Whitfield Leland III on non-agenda items. And I've been informed, uh, that he's, uh, not with us on this, uh, on the meeting, so moving to the next speaker, uh, we have Sierra Bush Restor on non-agenda items, item number 11 and item number 24. So moving to the next speaker, we have Sierra Bush Restor on non-agenda items, item number eleven and item number twenty-four. Calling again, Sierra Bush Restor. I understand we had her on the line and I'll move forward and if she rejoins us, we'll make sure to go back to her.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I just, I just saw her join the call again.
Okay.
All right, there she is. We got her up?
We've got her. We've got her now.
Okay, Sierra, name and address for the record.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So by my count, I signed up for one, two, three, four agenda items. And if we were taking comments as...
I would, Sierra, we can, your voice is modulating.
In other county commission meetings online as well as in person, I should get twelve minutes to speak.
I'll give you, I'll give you some extra time. Just be conscious.
Brian Desilage, do I get twelve minutes?
I'll give you some extra time. Just be conscious of everybody else in line waiting. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay, am I still breaking up? Can you guys hear me?
You're better, you're better now. Go ahead.
You can hear me? Okay, great. So I wanted to start off with non-agenda items, which was the first thing I signed up for. And what I wanted to speak on is, first of all, I wanted to address the fact that agenda item... Okay, I wanted to address the fact that agenda item twenty-four, it was not, information was given to the public about it with any necessary notice because I was able to locate an email and I emailed out to that email hoping that it would work and I was able to sign up for agenda twenty-four. But when I went to the registration link, agenda item twenty-four was not actually even on a place where you could actually click on it and sign up for agenda twenty-four. So there was no really public notice, an article about it around five fifty PM, which again, that's only like an hour or two before the, before the registration closed. And I think that if, given that really the public only had a chance to really see that this item was added about an hour or two before registration technically closed, that you guys should have taken public comment on agenda item twenty-four up until the meeting started. Because that seems like the fair and equitable thing to do, right? So to continue with that, what I really wanted to talk about for my non-agenda item time is that public comment has been really not taken and not taken adequately. There are plenty of cities who are able to take public comment in ways that don't disproportionately affect people who don't experience class privilege and don't disproportionately affect people who are disabled. And I think that it's really disheartening that public comment has been, first of all, it took six months for us to even begin to start having live public comment. And then, once that was done, things are being pulled, like for example, at this meeting where we signed up thinking, oh, we would have three minutes for each agenda item, but instead, we're being told that three minutes is all we're going to get for all agenda items. And then, once, Mr. Chair, two of your Commissioners spoke out about thinking that that may not be in the best interest of the public, you grudgingly accepted that people should have extra time. And it just seems that you, in particular, don't want to hear the public comments of the people of Tallahassee. And I find that really sad. And it's stressful. And I think that if we're going to have public comments, we should have three minutes for each agenda item to be able to speak on it. I understand taking it all upfront, that is more convenient for everyone so that we don't have to sit on the call for six hours at a time. But that being said, people should have the allotted time to speak on the allotted agenda, agenda items. Moreover, people who wanted to sign up for agenda item twenty-four and who wanted to speak on it should have been given more time to be able to address that. In fact, I think the only thing that could make up for this and for you guys to do your due diligence would be to announce the number live now for people to call if they would like to speak on agenda item twenty-four. And for that to be moved to later, later on in the meeting, perhaps before the budget hearing or perhaps after it so that people can actually have time to speak on agenda item twenty-four. Given that, agenda item twenty-four will affect every single one of us. I will move on to my other public comments. I just wanted to say that on the agenda item about Juneteenth, I think that's a great idea and I think that that should be a holiday. Moving on to agenda item eleven for soil and fertilization, I would like to echo the sentiments of Max Epstein and Daniella Irwin and that you should take the suggestions that they laid out. To move to agenda item twenty-four, now I will say my comments here. But again, as I said earlier in my public comment section of my comments, I do think that another opportunity for all the people of Tallahassee to respond to, that should be given. But I will go ahead and say what I wanted to say now. I find it a little, it makes me very uneasy as someone who has, who's very cautious about this global pandemic that we are in and as someone who continues to isolate to the best of my ability. It makes me very uneasy that the Commissioners who did to decide what is going to happen with the ordinance and with phase three are currently sitting in a room together, the state attorney and Brian Desilage. You guys are sitting there together and you're not wearing masks and you're not following CDC guidelines. So how can we trust that you're going to keep the people of Tallahassee safe if you won't even keep yourself safe and the people in the room with you safe? I just don't understand how we can trust that. Now, I have not had a lot of time to look over the proposal for agenda item twenty-four, nor has the general public. But given the behavior of the Commission, I doubt it is anything that will actually keep us safe. We all know that DeSantis is in the pocket of Donald Trump and that Donald Trump has no regard for science. So making those assumptions, it is clear that Ron DeSantis's move to reopen and go into phase three is not a safe move for Florida, nor is this a safe move for...
That's eight minutes, Sierra.
I have twelve.
No, you don't have twelve. This is not a political commentary. That's eight minutes. You need to wind it up.
Okay, well, I should if we were following correct procedure and public comment procedure. But I'll wrap it up. Thank you so much. Basically, what I'm saying is that we should not be moving to any sort of phase three and we should be very careful about keeping the people of Tallahassee safe. And I hope you can do that. You won't listen to us and I don't think you want to keep us safe. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just a quick comment. The executive order came out from the governor Friday afternoon. I know for a fact staff spent just about every waking moment this weekend to put an agenda item together so that we could be prepared. So if it inconveniences some people, I apologize. Thank you. And the ordinance, as it reads today, is as long as we're socially distanced in a private room outside of the public, we have every right to participate without a mask. Thank you. Next up.
The next speaker is Chelsea Reimer, and forgive me if I mispronounce that, on a non-agenda item and item fifteen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I would like to comment on three items, item fifteen, them twenty-four and unagenda items. Item fifteen is the proposed revisions policy for Juneteenth. I would urge Commissioners to vote in favor of option two to direct the county administrator to prepare a resolution in support of legislation to establish Juneteenth as a state and/or a national holiday as Juneteenth should be a national holiday and not just observed by the county government. Our country was built on systemic racism and our city, county and nation rarely address these injustices. Leon County in particular was the epicenter of the Florida slave trade and home to dozens of plantations that can still be visited today. It took years for Florida State University to remove the statue of Francis Epps despite being petitioned for years. The College of Criminology and Criminal Justice is even ironically named Epps Hall. Lynchings took place here just like they did throughout the rest of the country, even after the Civil War. We have trees that tell many hearing stories here and even Tallahassee residents do not know what has occurred here. So much history has been whitewashed and forgotten, but yet in the wake of George Floyd, many are opening their eyes to the truth that these everyday objects have a dark past and that past is not so long ago. We're still fighting for the same things now, justice. It is imperative that Juneteenth be made a national holiday. Tallahassee, like many in the South, enacted segregation policies like Jim Carr laws and historic FAMU students leading one of the biggest civil rights demonstrations in the state. Tallahassee, the poorest zip code in the state currently in 2020, black communities continue to get pushed out and their housing is being replaced by luxury student apartments that no one can afford. Our money is being disproportionately spent and focused between the North versus South, the East versus the West. Even comparing two universities here, FSU is clearly favored over FAMU. Our resources are not going to the right areas and affordable housing, jobs and grocery stores are not in areas that there are needed. Yes, this is just a proposal for a holiday, but this is why I urge option two because we are, as a county, city and nation, have a lot of work to do. Moving on to item twenty-four, I echo Sierra's previous statement saying that this was not previously given enough time for the public to make comment on. This was announced via WCTV at around five thirty-seven and wasn't even posted online on Facebook until after eight thirty. So the public was not given proper notice to make comments on this item. And as for your previous remark as for being enclosed, you at many times have been within less than speed of one another and have been clearly documented as such. So similarly, within item twenty-four, I would like further clarification from Max Epstein's comments as to those available to the public because statistics can be skewed and knowing those would definitely affect the positivity rates.
That's three minutes.
I, as I said, I signed up for multiple things.
I don't, two things. Keep going. I'll give you another minute.
Okay, that would still be six minutes, sir.
Go ahead. Finish your comments.
Okay, well, then I will just move to this. There's clear act of suppression of public comment and it's clear that you are cutting off people that you do not like what they have to say. And we can hear what you are saying by saying, okay, I'm going to cut this off. And it's not political commentary when these are political meetings and you do have to face your constituents and hear our public comments. So I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
The next and your last speaker is John Reimer. John Reimer.
Welcome, John. Name and address.
One seven six Park Brook Circle, Tallahassee, Florida. My name is John Reimer. I would like to echo a couple of different comments, Mr. Epstein's, Ms. Irwin's, Ms. Commissioner Williams-Cox, Sierra Bush Restor's and my wife's Chelsea, Chelsea Reimers. I one hundred percent agree with the fact that when I was signing up an hour before closing of, as far as signing up for issues to discuss, there was no checkbox for item number twenty-four. So before several of you were, you know, arguing against Commissioner Dozer and I believe it was Maddox, both spoke up as far as, you know, getting that option on the table. And you guys kind of argued against them and I disagreed because there was no checkbox for item number twenty-four to sign up for to speak. Sierra Bush Restor was the only one that was able to actually sign up for it because she found a number or an email or call or something. And, you know, I'm a little frustrated about that because I feel like I should be able to talk about that. I wanted to say, yeah, go ahead and move forward with, you know, twenty-four, even though I don't think that it's going to really amount to anything because I appreciate you all moving forward with it because I think staying in stage two is probably a good idea, given that we're still in a pandemic. I think that it's a little frustrating though because taking away fines and stuff like that is not going to help because you're going to have, I mean, we already have thousands of people gathering for football games, you know, outside and being broken up by the police. And I guarantee you, most of them aren't wearing masks. So taking away any sort of fines or any sort of repercussions is not going to help the situation. It's just going to give them more ability to make those, you know, irresponsible decisions and infect the majority of, you know, our constituents and your constituents and, you know, our citizens. And, you know, that's frightening. And, but, you know, as far as the agenda item that I did sign up for and was able to because I signed up for unagenda as well as the Juneteenth, item fifteen, I, again, I echo Chelsea's comments and Diane Williams-Cox's comments on Juneteenth. I think it's a, an excellent, you know, thing to move forward with. I do think it should be considered, like Chelsea said, option two, to make it a national or a state holiday. I think it should not be just focused on a countywide basis, but I do think it's a, it's a commendable thing to go ahead and move forward with and I appreciate you guys talking about this. Because that's what we do need to, we do need to actually discuss these sorts of issues. And I appreciate, again, Commissioner Dozer and Maddox for bringing up the issues earlier and actually stating, you know, we didn't have the option to really sign up for option or for number twenty-four. So I appreciate the both of you actually speaking up on that. And as far as the statements about you all being in a private room, I'm a little concerned about that as well given that, you know, it is, I'm assuming, a publicly paid building. Yes, it may be a private room, but it's technically still a publicly owned building, I'm assuming. Now, as far as that goes, you also have, you know, police officers and sheriffs that don't wear masks in general in the public, and I think that's a little frightening as well. I mean, if you guys are all going to sit here and tell us what to do and make these guidelines for us, I hope that you all follow them as well. I mean, we want everyone to be safe and we want everyone to be, you know, living together and, and, and helping each other and not killing one another, you know? The students might not be at high risk according to, you know, whatever Governor DeSantis wants to, you know, listen to. I mean, I think the science kind of speaks for itself, yes. You know, it does affect all ages and technically it's a little bit worse for older ages. But, you know, the students are just as capable of spreading the virus and we need to pay attention to that. So I appreciate your time. I'll yield the rest of my time. I appreciate you giving me a little bit of extra time to speak and flow as well. So thank you very much and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Just a quick comment. I can appreciate everybody's comments about public input. We're trying within the limits of what we've got technology-wise. I know I've gotten two hundred emails just this afternoon on item twenty-four. So that's, there's plenty of ability to, you know, give us input and we're taking it. But anybody up?
That concludes our speakers on non-agenda items and consent and general business.
Okay, so now we will go to consent and I understand there have been a couple of items pulled.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there are two items pulled, item number two pulled by Commissioner Minor and item number eleven pulled by Commissioner Dozer.
Is there a motion for the remainder of consent? I've got a motion by Commissioner Maddox. Is that a second, Commissioner Proctor? Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Maddox, a second by Commissioner Proctor to remaining, everything but two and eleven's a status report. But any other discussion about those consent without the ones that have been pulled? consent without the ones that have been pulled? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Okay, Mr. Administrator, number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number two from your consent agenda is the proposed public notice for the 2021 tentative board meeting schedule and the proposed 2021 board travel calendar. This item was pulled by Commissioner Minor.
Commissioner Minor, your record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, first of all, I want to thank county staff for working on this schedule. It's obvious that a lot of work's been put into this to maximize the dates as much as possible. A person or a commissioner could review this and reasonably assume that it could work and maybe it will, but for reasons that I've expressed in prior meetings, I can't vote in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Had a point of amusement during my briefing when I asked to pull this item and was told someone beat me to it. And I thought it would be likely Commissioner Minor because we have had a similar perspective on the meeting schedule for the last few months. So thank you for pulling it, Commissioner Minor. I will not be voting in favor of this item either and I think the comments, I would just add to what Commissioner Minor has already said, Mr. Chair, yes, we did receive a tremendous number of emails about masks, just as one example, today. And we've gotten a lot of email communications on other issues, but I think the argument that public dialogue within a sunshine meeting before a board that can vote and discuss issues in real time, dismissing the value of having these public meetings and that dialogue with our constituents is what is truly troubling to me. And our meetings are very long and whether it's here or Blueprint or others, we hear a lot of concern from our colleagues, from all of us, about the length of our meetings. Reducing our meetings puts more strain on each individual meetings, we have more to read, we have less time for citizens, and I will be concerned about this until and unless we change it. So I'm going to keep bringing it up and I appreciate the opportunity, again, Mr. Minor, or Commissioner Minor, thank you very much.
Anybody else? I would entertain a motion to accept the consent.
Chairman, I move item two and item eleven.
Eleven's a status report, but I don't, do we normally approve that?
Mr. Chair, I pulled item eleven.
Let's do, let's do two. Do I have a second for taking an item number two?
Second.
I have Commissioner Jackson second, I have a motion by Commissioner Proctor, second by Commissioner Jackson. Any other discussion on item number two? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then I'm assuming in any opposition, we have, okay. So the vote carries for item number two, five-two with Commissioner Dozier and Minor in abstention, yes.
Not abstention, but as a negative.
I mean, opposition, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, you know, also on the new, on the new schedule that just passed, there are five workshops, either scheduled or tentatively scheduled. In lieu of the motion that just passed to accept the upcoming year's schedule, what I'd like to propose for the board to consider is for those workshops that are scheduled or tentatively scheduled, we do change current protocol and allow citizen input during those workshops. So if we meet once, you know, during a board meeting in a month and then two weeks later we have a workshop, I'd like to change our current policy and allow public input at that workshop. So we do have an occasion to have public input collected from the public twice a month in that case. So I move that for, going forward, that the workshops, as they are scheduled and confirmed, that we do have a provision in those workshops to allow for public input during those workshops.
So is there a second for that?
Yes, I second it.
Okay, so what I'm being told is I think we need to have something brought back in the form of an agenda so that we can figure out how to make that work within the framework we've got, is that?
It's current policy.
It's a policy change, yeah.
Well, this is a non-agenda item.
Right.
If the board takes a vote on this issue right now, we need to be unanimous.
Okay.
It's a task. It's a big majority.
Just to bring it back as an agenda item. I would say, yeah, why don't we bring it back as an agenda item, Commissioner Minor? Would that be acceptable?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second and I understand it to mean that, yeah, Commissioner Maddox.
I'm pointing the motion on the floor, just trying to clarify a little bit of what Commissioner Minor's trying to get to here. Will the comments during the, during a workshop be germane to the workshop itself? Are you allowing people to comment on just anything they would like to talk about that may be coming in front of the county? Because we don't, we don't typically allow, like you said, policy-wise, to comment during workshops so we can focus specifically on that item, but if, if, if you're trying to open it up, I want to make sure that, that staff understands exactly what the intent of what you're trying to do here is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Rick, Commissioner Minor, yeah.
That's a fair question, Commissioner Maddox. What I'd like, it's a good question, what I'd like to do within this motion is to put this on a future agenda where we allow public input on non-agenda items as well as a separate opportunity for citizens to comment on the workshop topic.
All right, as a, as a backup question to the answer that Commissioner Minor gave, just for understanding for the general public and for us as commissioners, and I'm sure this policy was put in place far before any of us were commissioners, this, or, or, I'm sorry, county administrator or Ms. Attorney, can you speak to why we have it where there is no public comment during workshops? I do believe that every workshop that we have comes back as an agenda item to be ratified, if I'm not, if I'm correct, but I want, I want the public to understand in general why we go about no public comment during workshops. And that would be.
Yes, Commissioner Maddox, you did hit a part of it there in terms of, one of the reasons that the board went to that process when they did, and it's been there in place for perhaps as long as we have been conducting workshops and it was done intentionally at that time for the purposes of the board having a rare opportunity to discuss an item among yourselves without even the anticipation that you'd be taking a vote at that time. So it was twofold, that the board was able to discuss ideas, that sort of thing, without, again, the, the expectation of a vote being taken afterward and that if you did head in that direction, that there would be an opportunity for it to be ratified as an item on your agenda at which time public input would be taken.
Thanks for clarification, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Jackson and then followed by Commissioner Dozier.
Take my hand down, I had the same question. Hey, good job, Commissioner Maddox. I just needed a clarification on what he was asking for.
Commissioner Dozier, you're.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just, I guess my impression of Commissioner Minor's motion here was in light of the changes to the meeting schedule, he has made a motion for an agenda item to review our policy on public comment during workshops. So I, I agree and, you know, good reflection, Commissioner Maddox, on the history of this. And, Mr. County Administrator, yes, since the beginning, we've, you know, we focus on workshops as a different type of meeting and I think it should also be added, we do hear from people during workshops. We have a panel of citizens or experts or others and we really get into the nuance of issues. I find that valuable. Most of the time, though, we have enough time to really get into the dialogue on any number of issues when they're brought back to a commission agenda. I think what Commissioner Minor and I have expressed is a concern that we will not have enough time on, during those meetings if they're once a month. And I acknowledge, they weren't twice a month, every month throughout the year, it's not like we went from twenty-four to twelve, but we have reduced the number of meetings and that will have an impact. So if the motion on the table is just so that we can look at this policy, it seems pretty standard for this board to allow an agenda item to come back, even if we disagree with an issue. I've certainly voted for many agenda items that I didn't necessarily agree with it just so we see the details and I think that's what Commissioner Minor is asking for at this point. So I appreciate the look at, at the policy and I think it's appropriate in light of the other changes we've made, a lot of which are reducing the amount of time we have with the public in person, in chambers, or virtually. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rapo, before the vote?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Minor, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, in light of the schedule that just passed and, you know, we do have fewer board meetings now where the public can come in and provide citizen input, whether it's by video, phone, or hopefully in person sometime soon. I, I understand the, how workshops are meant to allow us time to be together and discuss things and focus on a subject matter, that's very important. We can't do that outside of a public notice meeting together. So, you know, it's important to have that time where we can really work through issues. I see this as a, as an important trade-off now. If we're going to be meeting fewer times where the public can meet, I think this is an important trade-off we should be able to make to allow the public to come to us when we're all together for a workshop. And so I'm hoping that you'll support this motion. At least it'll be coming up at a future agenda where we can discuss this in more detail. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I don't see anybody else. I've got a quick question for the administrator. How many meetings did we have last year?
I think the, the analysis that we did last time, which included the number of items, the number of meetings, we, by moving to the schedule, I think we were only going to be doing one commission meeting less than previously.
Okay, all right. Just, so it's not, there's, there's a feeling out there among the public that we're going from, into half the meetings. It's a, and we can add meetings as we see fit. I, I would, so anyway, that's not worth belaboring. Have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. I'm fine bringing the agenda item back, yeah. Anything, any, any opposition? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Minor, that's item two and we still have a status report to accept item number eleven, who pulled that?
Well, my Commissioner Dozier.
Commissioner Dozier, status report number eleven, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, sir, thank you. When I made the motion for this issue to be brought back, I was hoping that we would have an agenda item. Mr. County Administrator, I, I, I'm not sure if this is the reason why you included it as a status report, but I, I do appreciate staff's recommendation to move forward with updating the ordinance. So I think that was a good step forward and if, if that was the interpretation of my motion, I can understand why it ended up as a status report and I do want to note you having the item reference that the revised fertilizer ordinance would go before the Science Advisory and Water Advisory Committee and others. However, I think as we've heard during public comment today, there are additional steps that we could take, whether it be in regulations, in our own county practices, or in public education, that I would like to discuss and certainly have time to look at those different issues and decide as a group and in consultation with our committees and hearing from the public, whether or not we want to take additional steps. I also want to remind everybody that we did pass a motion, I think back in July, to look at our stormwater policies. I had made that motion and I think you can kind of see a theme here, even in 2019 when we added items about water to our strategic water quality, quantity, all things water to our strategic plan, we updated the Leon Water website, we were doing a lot of good work. But part of these initiatives have been to look at what additional steps we can take, what new technology might be out there, whether it's in stormwater, fertilizer, whatnot. So, again, I think this is a good step and as I get back to my options here, Mr. Chair, since my iPad just shut down, I can accept option one and, Mr. County Administrator, this is not in the form of a motion right now, if I could add to that, direct staff to change, to make the changes, update the ordinance in accordance with the state model, but then bring it back as part of an agenda item to show us those changes and any comments from Water Resources, from Science Advisory Committee, and some of these other options that have been incorporated into the ordinance in Indian River and Alachua, which I think was referenced when I made the motion, but was articulated very well by our citizens today. So, again, I'm, I'm wondering if we can move forward, I don't want to hold this up, with drafting an ordinance, but not move to any kind of final approval, bring it back as an agenda item. Would that work for you?
Yes, and in fact, as is our practice, this would come back to you as an agenda item first for a review of the ordinance and then to seek your direction at that time with whether or not you wanted to have it scheduled for public hearing.
Okay, that, that part was, and forgive me, we didn't get into this much during our marathon briefing yesterday, we had a lot to cover. I wasn't quite sure if it was going to come back as an item or just go straight to, you know, requesting a public hearing be scheduled, which is oftentimes on consent. I'm talking about a general business item where we can discuss comments made by Water Resources, Science Advisory, and look at other options from Alachua and Indian River, particularly.
Yes, that is what we were intending to do.
Okay. So nothing else needs to be added to option one in order to achieve that goal? That's what you're telling me?
I think, I think except that we captured your, which we would consider an amendment to that motion, should it, should the board wish to see this, is that you wished to see in addition to the model ordinance, the state model ordinance that we've, that we discussed here, I was viewing that as a, as a revision to the, to the options there was to include provisions for your consideration from the Indian River Ordinance specifically, as well as, and I was writing, but noting one other.
Alachua County.
Alachua. Indian River and Alachua. And so that, yeah, procedurally, yes, we were intending on doing that, but we would, I think the chairman has, has that captured as part of the motion to bring back options related to Indian River County as well as Alachua County for the board's consideration as well.
And any comments from Water Advisory or Science Advisory? So they'll review it before the agenda item comes back, we'll be able to hear their comments, suggestions, questions, and review both this, the draft of this updated state model ordinance, which kind of brings it up to where we are right now with DEP, and these additional options that we may have. Thank you, okay. So, Mr. Chair, restating this, it's a good first step, I'm glad we got here, but this is why I pulled it, because there are other things that we, that I would like to discuss and I think it would be in all of our interests, we've all expressed a commitment to looking at water quality throughout the county. So I would like to make a motion for option one, to bring it back with an agenda item that also provides information on Alachua County and Indian Rivers ordinance as well as comments from Science Advisory and Water Resources Committee.
Second. Have a motion from Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Yes, Commissioner Lidley? Oh, you're just.
I was seconding the motion.
Oh, okay, okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion has been presented by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Minor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think, Commissioner Brock, are you with us on this? I got a pan, okay, I think we're unanimous, okay. That's, now we roll to general business, so, and as I mentioned earlier, we will go to the add-on item, which is item number twenty-four first. I just think there's, that's the majority of the people in the audience probably are waiting for that, so how do you want to tee this up?
I'll take it, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number twenty-four provides a status report on the executive order. Commissioners, item number 24 provides a status report on the executive order issued by the governor last Friday, which initiated Phase Three of the state's reopening plan and allowed all businesses throughout the state to immediately reopen. It also provides an update on the county's reopening plan and seeks any additional policy guidance the board may wish to provide relative to the reopening of county operations, programs, and services. As you may also recall, during the May 21st special meeting, the board accepted the Leon County COVID-19 Response and Reopen Plan, which again provides for a gradual phased-in approach to safely reopening the community. The county's plan is consistent with federal guidance and our reopening plan, and the reopening plan for the state and expert public health recommendations. Over the past several months, Commissioners, we've been progressing through the phases of reopening from the days when we were in a strict distancing scenario, consistent with the governor's statewide executive orders and is provided in the county's plan. As you know from your daily updates and from previous agendas, since the beginning of the pandemic, the county's been fully engaged in our efforts to mitigate the spread of the virus. We have funded an extensive expansion of testing and contact tracing through the Leon Care Program. We have coordinated the distribution of more than 1.3 million pieces of PPE and distributed 175,000 face masks or face coverings to the community and to businesses. And we will continue to coordinate with our emergency management and public health partners throughout the region to meet any potential surge in healthcare needs. The county has also proactively taken steps relative to county operations to ensure the health and safety of the public and our staff. As provided in our local reopening plan, we have implemented daily temperature checks and screenings for employees upon returning to work. And we've also installed physical barriers in facilities where close physical interaction may occur, and we've rearranged gathering spaces to limit the transmission of COVID-19. We are providing free face coverings to citizens when visiting any county facility, of course, citizens who do not have one. As I mentioned a moment ago, the governor issued the executive order last Friday, which initiated Phase Three of the state's reopening plan. Specifically, the governor's order eliminated all restrictions on businesses throughout the state by previous executive orders, which allows for businesses to reopen immediately at full capacity. In addition, the EO suspends the collection of fines and penalties related to COVID-19 regulation, which includes the county's face covering ordinance. In light of the EO, the county's ordinance remains in effect with the exception of any penalty provisions. I will note, however, that no fines or penalties have been assessed by the sheriff's office or TPD for noncompliance with the ordinance. Finally, Commissioners, with respect to the phasing of the county's reopening plan related to Leon County operations, programs, and services, the board continues to have full discretion over this area. And as you'll note in your agenda item, most of the Leon County operations and programs and services are currently open in Phase Two. The services that are suspended or limited in capacity are those from parks, or libraries, or public events that may involve the close interaction among people. These services are suspended or limited in the current phase in order to mitigate the spread of the virus, consistent with all of our other efforts. As you may recall, the federal and state reopening plans provide for specific public health benchmarks that should all be met over a two-week period of time prior to the advancing of one phase to the next. These include hospital visits with COVID-like symptoms or flu-like symptoms, a number of new cases, the number of new cases rather, and the test positivity rates. Your agenda item includes the latest weekly public health data in Leon County from the Department of Health. According to the data, the county does not currently meet gating criteria to move to the next phase of reopening. You'll see that the number of new cases and test positivity and the number of patients reporting to the hospital for COVID-like symptoms have all declined over the past two weeks. However, the number of hospital visits with flu-like symptoms has increased. That's important because, again, from a public health standpoint, we don't know if is that a leading indicator, and are the others trailing indicators? Again, it's just important, we pay close attention to these things. That's why all of the gating criteria need to be met prior to moving, or it's advisable to be met prior to moving to different phases. Also, Commissioners, the latest guidance from the CDC continues to recommend physical distancing and wearing face coverings to stop the spread of the virus, and Johns Hopkins is still projecting a second wave in the fall that could be complicated by the onset of a flu season. So based on the current health metrics in Leon County, Commissioners, in light of the strong public health guidance that the CDC and other health experts continue to issue, the item before you recommends maintaining Phase Two for the county's reopening plan for operations, programs, and services. In Phase Two, the county would maintain the current 50% occupancy at the Leon County library facilities. Remaining closed would be playgrounds, community centers, and active recreation facilities. The county would also continue to discourage large public events and gatherings where appropriate physical distancing cannot be maintained, including concerts at the Capitol Cascades Amphitheater. Under this option, the county would continue to monitor public health gating criteria, and I would bring back recommendations to the board for further reopening when the county meets all of the criteria over a 14-day period, as discussed earlier. However, as I mentioned, the board has full discretion, Commissioner, over the reopening of county operations and programs and services, and I would welcome any additional direction that you may provide. In closing, Commissioners, the governor's executive order allows all businesses throughout the state to reopen immediately. The executive order does provide the option to limit the indoor capacity of restaurants for public health purposes, should you wish to do so. However, the threshold that the governor requires for local governments choosing this option are frankly legally and perhaps politically problematic for governments to do so. I don't think that's an accident. That was an editorial comment, given this action of the state. So we're not recommending, Commissioners, that you require different restrictions than the state on businesses at this time. Again, we're not recommending that you require any different restrictions than the state is on businesses at this time. However, with respect to county operations and programs and services, the item recommends, again, remaining in Phase Two due to the current public health metrics in the community and the latest status from the CDC, which continues to recommend physical distancing. The board has full discretion to modify any portions of the county plan for Phase One, and I would again welcome any policy direction that you have for us, Commissioners and Commissioners. We have staff on hand to provide any additional details or answer any questions that you may have about the reopening of county operations. Should the board wish to make any modifications at this time, we will share an updated plan with the community reflective of those changes. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back. Happy to answer any questions and welcome your direction. And I should note for the record that we received 13 comments on this item, which were distributed to you and will be shared online and will be made a part of public record. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll send...
Thanks. I'm just going to make a couple of comments since I'm not allowed to make a motion, just kind of put my feelings out on the table. First of all, as far as timing and public input, I went back and looked at the actual, the governor announced midday on Friday, but we did not get the executive order till four o'clock Friday afternoon. And I know staff was in here almost the whole weekend putting together this item so that we could have this for tonight. So for people that feel like this somehow inconvenienced them, we apologize. I don't know that it was something we did intentionally, and certainly within the limits of what we were given, the governor's executive order was effective immediately. And I know in the past, there have been some issues where what he says and what actually is in the executive order, there are some nuances. So we were hesitant at noon to start, you know, off on a trip that might not take us to the right place. So that's just, you know, be patient with us. There's a lot of information that got thrown at us in a short period of time. I would love to see, I'll start with saying, I know we've all gotten a lot of emails, I would love to see the mask mandate continue. I think it's prudent, I think it's appropriate. I also would like to see that we allow cross-country with spectators and the testing that allows teams to come in. I'd also like to see baseball and football online with protocols for safety, and that's my two cents. I'll elaborate it later. I want to start getting input from y'all, but rather than sitting back and waiting, I thought I'd make my feelings known to start with. With that, I will take, yes, Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to take the path of least resistance on this matter tonight, and if the county attorney can maybe chisel for us what I think was Vince's last recommendation, and that is that we stay in Phase Two mode and disposition. When it comes to safety standards, I'm not comfortable following the governor. I think that we should be the leaders of this county. Our bar is higher. Our people are special to us. We raise the bar on high standards, and I'd just like to make that motion that would allow us to keep the mask in place, to keep us in the mold of number two. What Vince said, are in Phase Two. And if there's anything else that goes with that last part of what Vince said, that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. I guess it's option one, if you look at the way this is laid out. Is there a second? Commissioner Minor, you second it? Okay, Commissioner Dozier, up to speak. Commissioner Dozier?
Yes, sir. I was just navigating the computer. Might have been six months, but it's still a little challenging. Okay, this is, this has a lot of moving parts, and I'm glad you noted, Mr. Chair, that when we get something, and this has happened before in recent months, there's an announcement from the governor on a Friday. Our county administrator and county attorney staff are working on it through the weekends, and we get an update Sunday evening or on Monday. It doesn't give any of us much time to review the item, but that work is essential so that we know the legal implications of it and have it in the right context so we can have a discussion. So I am glad you pointed that out. And with that, I think a broader discussion of Phase Two and Phase Three issues to be brought back at the October 13th meeting is likely in order. Mr. County Administrator, and I'm going to put a caveat here, there's a couple of issues that I think we should talk about tonight, youth sports, some of the other questions you put on the table, Mr. Chair. But for the start here, Mr. County Administrator, when we spoke yesterday, we've received a lot of questions about what the metrics are that we use to look at the phasing. You have referenced a number of those. Of course, we heard Claudia's presentation earlier that, and you noted this as well, the trends are moving in the right direction. However, and during our briefing, you said if we continue to move in this direction, we would be due under our own phasing criteria, our gating criteria, to have that more robust conversation about whether or not we're moving from Phase Two to Phase Three. Is that correct?
That is correct. We would bring back, as soon as we met those gating criteria, we would bring that back at the next meeting for the board's consideration.
And it is possible that that meeting might be October 13th, our very next meeting. Is that correct?
It could be.
Yeah, if we keep moving in the right direction. So that is significant to me. I would also say that we have a meeting on October 13th, and we have one on November 17th, I believe. That's a pretty long gap, and if things needed to shift in between those two meetings, we can still call a special meeting. Is that right, as we contemplated earlier this year?
Yeah, we remain under that direction.
I'd commit to that, too, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just, that was kind of refreshing all our memories. But yes, Mr. Chair, you and the county administrator are committed to that, calling a special meeting if we hit that threshold, right? So that's the first part, that the broader Phase Two to Phase Three discussion, I don't want to move too quickly here. The spike we saw in May to June, quite frankly, if we remember back that far, from a lot of our perspectives, a lot of us feel that we, and I think it's been proven, we reopened fast around Memorial Day, and we saw a huge spike, and that's when we moved, we saw the numbers going up, and we moved to do the mask mandate. One conversation with Mark O'Brien from TMH over the summer, late July, early August, he had said a mask mandate, you see the impacts of that typically after four to six weeks. And that seems to track in large part with numbers starting to come down in August. I don't, I'm not looking at the charts right now, but the people I have talked to and what I've heard from our agenda items and others, I mean, our COVID-19 updates, our mask mandate has helped, and I'm going to echo what you've said, Mr. Chair and others, I don't want to see that go away. I don't think it's time. I think as the CDC Director indicated, it is the best tool we've got to continue to control the spread and further reduce our numbers. So I wanted to start there because I'm not prepared to look at the full scope of Phase Two and Phase Three. However, it does resonate with me, the comments we've gotten from some, a lot of citizens over the summer, in recent weeks, that we need to be pretty clear with what we're looking at. I'm not saying that we haven't, but there's a lot of different noise, there's a lot of things going on, and we didn't meet during the summer. So I believe that it's in this commission's interest to hold a public press conference, take questions from the media, something we have not done since March, I don't believe, at some point in the very near future. And I think we should be answering questions about what the gating criteria is. I know we've articulated this in other ways, but there still is a lot of confusion. So I'm going to stop on that point, Mr. Chair, and just say, I hope this issue's not going away. I think we need to talk about it very soon, and I think we need to be more upfront and find ways to be clearer with those gating criteria that we all rely on and are very important. We've been trying to do that. I'm not saying that we haven't, but I think we can take another step. The second piece, Mr. Chair, about youth sports and cross-country, that is an extremely difficult and challenging question. So I would like some direction from you, Mr. Chair, on how you want to handle this.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Do you want to ask a few questions and get reaction from the board on youth sports and cross-country? Do you want all comments at once? How do you want to approach the next part of this?
Well, we have a motion on the floor. I'll give you my opinion, since you've asked for it. We could amend the motion, would be a way to do this. My feeling is that the city has opened up 53 or 54 of the park fields that they have. They run their programs, as you know. We have 25 or 27 fields. We basically turn them over to volunteers and parents, who have given us plans. I think it's a little cumbersome in a community like ours to have one form of government doing one thing and the other, the other. And I've listened to the parents, I've listened to the coaches, I've listened to the kids. People have a choice about whether they send their child to school. They have a choice as to whether or not they send their child to play sports in school. College students have the ability to choose whether or not they came back to a brick-and-mortar school, and to whether or not they want to play intramurals. I think it's fair we give the parents that same choice. So my personal feeling, and I know this may be more, would be amend the motion to basically allow baseball, football, as would have been started with the parameters we've talked about, spectators for cross-country, and then work with the testing, because the way the testing is today, it virtually shuts down some of the meets because the kids that are asymptomatic have a hard time getting tested. I know that's more information than you wanted, but I wanted to kind of weigh in on that. Go ahead, Commissioner Dozier.
Yeah, my question, Mr. Chair, is there is an enormous amount of information and questions from citizens about our mask ordinance and whether or not we're going from Phase Two to Phase Three. about our mask ordinance and whether or not we're going from Phase Two to Phase Three. That could be one standalone discussion, and that's what I was speaking to first.
Okay.
The question that I haven't even started sharing my thoughts on about cross-country and the testing, I have a lot of questions about that. Youth sports, meaning Babe Ruth, Little League, Pop Warner, that is a separate subject. So personally, I don't think we can conflate these three issues. And I would rather separate the three issues, take them up individually. If we can do that, then I would say to Commissioner Proctor's motion, and I'm not, I think we got a second on that. Basically, Phase Two is where we are. And I would support that if we are going to have time and maintaining the mask ordinance. I would, could support that motion if, Mr. Chair, you're going to go to the discussion about youth sports and cross-country immediately after that.
I think Mike, you want to give a shot?
Sure. I would just, I would just say that the way we've structured the item, Commissioners, is that obviously with the motion on the floor would be to stay in Phase Two. Option Two is there to go to Phase Two with modifications. So that would be our interpretation, what Commissioner Dozier is talking about. So stay in Phase Two with other things except for other programs. And of course, Item Three, or Option Three, would be to go to a full Phase Three. So that Option Two is there, should the board wish to go to Phase Two, but make changes as you deem appropriate.
And I think, without polling everybody here, I think we're probably in synchronicity about mask mandate. I don't need to ask, but I think that's a given unless somebody says otherwise. But, but I'm not, and I don't want to assume anything, but that's built into it, that the mandate stays in place. Okay, the floor is still yours, Commissioner Dozier.
Okay, Ms. County Administrator, thank you for that clarification. Yes, I see Option Two. Again, it, it's just, this is a big hairy one, so that's why I was trying to separate it out. For cross-country, I'll start there. I have been more concerned with comments I've heard about our local high school students and those who may not be able to afford testing. And there may be some local options with that. I'm, I've wondered if the FSU-TMH partnership and the local testing that they're conducting, it was my understanding over the summer, there would be some community tests available from TMH that will be processed at Innovation Park. And if our local high school students need rapid testing and can't afford it, I wonder if that would be an option. But of course, we have a race this weekend. I am not persuaded that testing shouldn't be one of the guidelines, particularly when you have busloads of folks coming in from outside of our community. I understand the concerns that have been raised about that. But frankly, some emails that were sent were not sent to the entire board. So I was, I was late to that discussion late last week when the county administrator brought the full board into that discussion. So that's why I wanted to separate these issues, Mr. Chair, is I think there was one suggestion from a coach at Lincoln to have one parent per participant for this weekend. I can, I can understand those suggestions. But this testing question, I'm not willing to just say no testing requirements for the, you know, for the larger out-of-town meets. On youth sports, again, I'm willing to stop here at any point because this is a lot of material. For youth sports, and here's my big one. I have been committed since day one, I think most of us have, to the public health guidelines, say X, and we have consistency in our Phase Two approach. I think that is important. It justifies our mandate. It is what has guided our decisions. Youth sports, though, for a team at Little League, for Babe Ruth, for Pop Warner, they're local students. And I have talked to and reviewed the guidelines that Pop Warner and Little League are willing to put in place. And I am reluctantly persuaded that our parents should have that choice if those guidelines are maintained. And if we can discuss how county staff can help with some logistics, say roping off the bleachers. And there might be a couple other ifs to add to that. Again, Mr. Chair, I can only support youth sports if we get into a lot of those. If this, then we can approve it. And I would like to dig into that conversation a little bit more after I hear from some of the others.
Sure. Okay, why don't you hold that thought, and I got a couple of people teed up. I've got Commissioner Maddox followed by Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Maddox, you were up first, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, let me thank Commissioner Dozier for her comments about youth sports. I think I spoke pretty passionately about it last time, and my thought that I think this isn't something that's just, we should consider doing. I think this is a sense of our issue of mental health, as well as getting those kids out and choice for those parents, whether or not they want to let their kids play. In a effort to try to keep this thing as easy as possible, Mr. Chair, because I am also in support of the action of not just doing the screenings, but FSAA athletes versus the screenings and the testing. But I'm willing to separate that out in order to get to the issue of youth sports first. So my motion would be for Item Number Two with the modification that we allow youth sports with, with the stipulations placed in place by those of our youth sports that they sent us, like Pop Warner, as well as Babe Ruth and others. So that would be my, my motion. And then after we dispense with the item, I'll come back to the issue of cross-country, which, again, I'm going to go ahead and put out there. I do support the idea of screening versus testing. But for right now, I'm just focused on Item Number Two, with Option Number Two, with the modification of opening up, opening up youth sports with an approved safety plan from those respective leagues that contract with the county. That is my motion, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion, and I would second that, just so, so that's the motion on the floor. I've got Commissioner, are you through, Commissioner Maddox?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I got Commissioner Minor followed by Commissioner Jackson. So there's a motion and a second, and then Commissioner Lindley, I mean, Commissioner Dozier, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that's a substitute motion.
Yeah, right. I apologize. Substitute motion. Right. Commissioner Minor, yeah, floor's through.
First of all, I just, I want to thank the county attorney and her staff and the county administrator and his staff for working over the weekend on this. I used to write agenda items when I worked at the city, and they take a lot of time. And something that addresses an executive order from the governor has a lot of legal implications. I'm sure you are working very hard. So thanks to all of you for working on that. A question, and this is, this stems from a briefing that I had from the county attorney. So just to clarify, Commissioner Proctor's, well, I guess it's a substitute motion now, but I think it's still, the question still applies. Just so we all understand, and so the public that's watching understands, we recognize that we no longer have the authority to levy fines on violators of the mask ordinance. But from a, as a technical matter, the actual section in our ordinance would remain the same, unchanged. We just would not be able to enforce it because of the governor's order. So in other words, the mask ordinance that we currently have in force, if this motion were to be approved, would basically remain unchanged. But that one section about fines would not be enforceable. Is that correct, Madam County Attorney?
That's correct. Commissioner Minor.
Okay, great. That's it for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jackson followed by Commissioner Dozier, and then Commissioner Lindley.
Hey, Commissioner Maddox, I normally can follow you, but could you restate the substitute motion for me?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Jackson, substitute motion is simply Option Number Two with all of the Phase Two things with the modification that we allow youth sports with the proper precautions placed in place by the thing, by the recommendations or the stipulations sent to us by the leagues that we actually contract with, Pop Warner, Babe Ruth, et cetera, et cetera. And then along, I'm willing to hear out the recommendations that you guys may have for county staff to help out with it as well. So that's the motion on the floor. Substitute motion.
All right, yeah, thank you for the clarification. So, yeah, I've had a lot of thought about this, particularly because of 29 years working with young people and a variety of forced and unforced coaching opportunities over those years. And realizing that some of our unincorporated area students won't have access to some of the same opportunities that interior of our city limit students or, or young people will have. That's bothered me. That's kind of the first rum, is that I want them to have access to those opportunities the same as those that live within the city limits. I do want to remind, you know, our school board, I feel really comfortable about what we've done in county. And I want to commend our superintendent, Rocky Hannan, and the team that he has, and more importantly, the individual schools and the administrators. Because we can ensure, many times, every single kid is screened every single day getting off that bus. If you have some spare time and an extra couple of masks, I, well, we don't take volunteers right now, but we would certainly appreciate the extra help. So I can ensure that. And even here in Leon County, the Leon County School Board has decided that competition would only occur at the inter-county level. So we've got our football teams and our volleyball teams only competing against each other because we know how serious we take this as a county. And I think even seeing the diminished results at the county level, or excuse me, at the school level, is a direct result of the action that this board, all of you, took on June 23rd. So I commend you for that because I think without a doubt, it has had an impact on our young people and the transmission rate that's occurred there. I think at last count, it was only 43 out of 15,000 students. So I can ensure what's happening in Leon County is, is being done with fidelity. What I can't ensure is that a screening for someone coming in that's going to run in a high school championship cross-country race from another jurisdiction or another county, that they have had the same fidelity. I certainly have faith in the coaches and the administrators that are part of the public education system in these other counties. But I would just wonder that, that we have established a very tight bubble, I think, for participation in high school athletics here locally. Expanding that and not having at least some parameters in place for athletes to come in from outside of our county is, is not a suggestive, a great idea. But I have great anxiety about allowing kids that attend my school that are within the city limits, participating in city-sponsored programs and our unincorporated county kids not having access to some of those same opportunities. That gives me real heartburn as a leader of, believe it or not, a leader of young people having access to those opportunities. So I'm interested in hearing what other people have to say. And Commissioner Dozier, I think you did a really good job of kind of summarizing what I just took about four or five more minutes to prolong about. But again, I want to hear what other folks have to say. So I'll stand by.
I've got Commissioner Lindley followed by Commissioner Maddox followed by Commissioner Dozier. Or is it, it's Lindley, maybe it's Lindley, Dozier, Maddox. Sorry, yeah. So Lindley, Commissioner Lindley, you're up first.
Okay, thank you. You know, I think all of us have suffered a lot of heartburn trying to do, do what we hope is best for those kids. We're really in an interesting spot right here. The governor has opened up our state 100% all businesses, playgrounds, everything. Everything is, or not playgrounds, but all the businesses and things are now open 100%. We're right at the beginning of this. We really don't know how the next couple of weeks are going to unfold. We'll be meeting again October 13th, where we might have a better feel for really what's going to happen in the next couple of weeks with, you know, everybody just out and about. Yes, wearing masks, I hope, as best they can. But, so I'm really having trouble getting there to say, yes, I'm ready to open youth sports. I'm not sure, Commissioner Maddox, if you were, I don't think that you were saying also your comments about cross-country. I do agree with you that screenings, I think, are important, but not necessarily that testing requirement, which I think is a little harsh. You know, I just, I just feel like to make this change now and to open up things now, when we are just now going on Phase Three, as far as the governor's orders are concerned, we're just rolling the dice once again. So I will respectfully probably vote against this amended motion.
Okay, for clarity, I think Commissioner Maddox, you want to restate your motion? And, or maybe I'll try and you tell me if I'm on base. It's a sec, it's Item Number Two, basically, with baseball, football. And he segmented track out and said we would have a separate discussion. Because to Commissioner Dozier's point earlier, it is getting pretty complicated and there's a lot of moving parts. But I think we could dispose of the main part of the motion, or at least that's the way I understood, Commissioner Maddox. Fall, we would have fall youth sports, right?
Yes, yes. Basically, fall youth sports is what we have. Commissioner Lindley, were you done?
Yes.
Okay. I think, and the reason I did it that way, I think I was next in line, Mr. Chair.
You are Commissioner Dozier, but if it, Commissioner Dozier, you okay? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Maddox.
The reason I did it that way is because I do understand the comments made by Commissioner, Commissioner Jackson and the thought pattern of our kids will be playing locally, they'll be playing each other. It makes a lot of sense there. Everybody will be under pretty much the same kind of mandates there. The testing will be in place. And we've seen the literature from those leagues that we contract with. Let me specify what contract actually means. These people do not give us money. We just allow them to use our fields to conduct their leagues. And that is Babe Ruth, as well as, as Pop Warner, and I believe there's one more that we, that we contract. Who was it? Who was it? Vince? I'm sorry, Mr. Administrator?
Chairs.
You've got to cover, we could get you the leagues.
Okay.
Yes, I think you have on point.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Jackson.
I think you have Little League Baseball, Babe Ruth, and Pop Warner that all have fall activities.
Right, right. Those are all fall sports, and they're local. And I want to allow them to get, to get started with their, with their work and let those kids get out there and play just like those are in the city. Again, it is self-contained because all these kids will be playing within the county. They'll be playing with classmates, people that go to school and all that good stuff. We will, we'll put the right things in place. I think it is a larger discussion to have, to talk about when we talk about allowing folks to come in town without any kind of testing, but screening. Quite frankly, I am comfortable with the screening process, but I want us to have a larger conversation as a board on whether or not we are comfortable. And I think it's two totally, totally separate issues when you talk about letting those play local and letting, letting some come in. So that's why I separated, separated it out the way that I did. I'm hoping that you guys can support this motion. Our kids deserve the right. They deserve the, I'm not going to say the right, they deserve the privilege. They deserve the opportunity to play, and those parents deserve the choice to say whether or not their kids can play. And so, again, this isn't just an issue of yes or no, it's an issue of public health for some of those kids. I was one of those kids. I can imagine what I would be cooped up doing if I didn't have an opportunity to be on a football field or a baseball diamond. I couldn't play baseball at all, or on a basketball court. So it's good that we're having this conversation. Thank you again for the considerations. And I hope we can make the decision, move forward here today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate this discussion. I've said it to a lot of the constituents I've talked to recently that I wish there was some consistency from the state or national level on these things, and we might be having a different discussion. This is a really hard thing for a local government to take up individually because there's so much travel. I mean, we have folks traveling outside of Leon County, going to play ball every weekend in different places. And we've all heard from those parents, they're having experiences where they see a lot of very responsible behavior and a lot of measures that other communities have put in place, like roping off the bleachers and doing things like that that do conform to public health guidelines to protect public health. So we, I think, Commissioner Jackson, I appreciate your generous comments there, but I actually generous comments there, but I actually am so glad that you uh took the time um to talk about the the really incredible numbers that we're seeing. Claudia mentioned them earlier. Um, we hadn't seen a spike after the schools opened. And to the credit of the Leon County School System, to principals and administrators like you and others, um, you're you're managing an incredibly difficult task and doing it well. What has really hit home for me is exactly what you hit on, and you articulated it better than I did. I didn't even really dig into it. We have kids in the rural area of the county that do not have access to team sports right now. And they would more than likely be playing with kids from neighborhood, from their schools. And I do think the health screening guidelines and the guidelines that we've seen from Little League Pop Warner, and I assume Babe Ruth would have some as well, I don't have them in front of me, um, are going to be in line with those same guidelines that we've seen at the schools and other places. So um, I have less concern about youth sports as a public health risk. And I will also say, this is the kind of my struggle with the phase two. Phase two will still has a lot of reasons to maintain phase two and to be extremely careful and to maintain masks. I think we can trust parents and volunteers and coaches to handle youth sports in a responsible way, and they know what's at stake if they don't, if we have to shut down sports for the fall or the spring, should we move forward here. So I do think that's good. Now, what I had on my list here was um kind of if guy, if guidelines are followed and county can support these efforts, then I could get there. And I'm just going to run through this real quick, Mr. Chair. Um, county assists, I I I think our time is very short. Um, Little League, for example, had already voted in chairs, I believe, to not move forward with the fall, and they're kind of on hold right now. And, you know, depending on what we decide this evening. Um, so we do need to move quickly. But what kind of support can we provide from our staff to, um, can they keep going back to the bleachers example, or even have hand washing stations, purchase some of those, things like that? I don't know if we can flesh all that out tonight, but I think there is some assistance from county staff that we could provide. However, I do not think enforcement should be on the back of county staff. The guidelines that are in place by these various um leagues, our partners, I would like to see a signed agreement. They agree to these guidelines for fall sports, and they agree to enforce it and to encourage their parents and others to to remind them, not encourage them, to let them know what the guidelines are, to give us that um assurance that they are going to enforce these measures going forward. We can't be the police at every Little League game or Pop Warner game, um, our staff, that is. And um, if those things are agreed to, if we wanted to take it a step further, we could say, and I would like to do this, that if those guidelines are not followed um to the best of their ability, good faith, that we could shut down fall sports at any time. And um, I think we need to have that that ability to enforce the proper measures, and I can't think of any other way to do that other than use the guidelines they've already come up with as an agreement and um ask that our partners enforce those guidelines during team sports this fall. Um, I think that was that was all of it. Mr. County Administrator, I guess I'll turn this over to you. Anything I just said, is it impossible? Do you have concerns about that? Is that a way that we could manage this going forward?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. Uh, no, Commissioner Dozier, I was listening closely to what you were saying. Uh, certainly the um physical distancing uh at the of the fields themselves, uh that's not a heavy lift for us. I mean, at all, we can do that. As you know, our our we have great Parks and Recreation staff. They are involved in their professional associations, and and they're up to speed on on how to, should the board decide to do this, on how to uh properly um facilitate uh that type of these types of um uh events and and competitions with mitigation from a from a physical standpoint. And certainly, we can do that. You've you've mentioned uh roping off bleachers, uh marking off physical spaces, that type of thing, not difficult to the extent that there um is other um uh thing, that there are other things that are needed uh to help mitigate. Certainly, that won't be a problem. You know, our staff on on board direction, we will, we will, we will go out there and and make it happen to the best of our abilities um should should that motion pass.
Okay, and we could, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Floor's yours. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Could we, we we're going to be talking about CARES Act funding in a little while. I don't know if that's a source or others, but if there is a need for additional hand washing station or something like that, could we address that? Because frankly, that may also, that would also be necessary for the spring. Um, and maybe we could even have some recommendations brought back at the next meeting if you need more direction for that.
Right. We believe so. And and if the motion passes, uh, we we don't believe that we would need um any additional direction. We'd we'd have what we need, and we could certainly uh pursue um all of those options. And I think we would we would do so um successfully.
And lastly, do you think using those guidelines that the leagues have developed as a form of an agreement that we allow youth sports to proceed for the fall if they agreed to abide by these guidelines and enforce the guidelines during practice or competition? Um, is that something that we can do?
I have to defer to our county attorney a little bit. I think it'd be a little difficulty in terms of what constitutes noncompliance. Is it someone driving by that complains, uh given that we don't have um active um sports and and recreation um personnel and and staff, uh for lack of a better term? Uh, so the the what constitutes noncompliance issues would be the difficult part. Uh, but I don't think, uh, you know, effectuating the agreements and requiring mitigation plans and holding people responsible um would be the difficult part. But please, Chastity, I don't want to get out of my my uh desk. I'll defer to you.
Before Chastity speaks, if you don't mind, Commissioner Dozier, because this kind of goes in line with what you were talking about. Um, I had kind of had the idea when you were talking of random compliance checks, whereas we might not have folks um that 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 runs sports league within our Parks and Rec Department, but we do have Parks or Parks and Rec Department that could randomly go by a practice or a game to check to see that everything is being done the way they're supposed to be done. And if we find out that it's not, we can either suspend that team or suspend the league altogether. So, uh while you're addressing it, Chastity, could you address that point too? Because I I'll be very, I'll be very frank with you. I do want those kids to have an opportunity to play, but I don't want to be made a fool of. The minute that any league, any any team uh does anything other than what the rules say they're supposed to do, I'd be the first one to take them out. Because we have an agreement here that you'll do what you have to do to protect the community based off of the of the things that you've sent us. So if we can't do it where the way that Commissioner Dozier is talking about, can we have a random compliance check where there are penalties for not complying with the rules that you said and contr- uh and and sign that you would that you would put in place? That's my question along with Commissioner Dozier.
Chastity, you want to try and address that? Yeah.
Thank you. Um, County Administrator's doing quite a good job. Um, I'm answering the question. So um, you know, without having seen any of these plans or knowing what they look like, again, um interpreting and applying those in the form of a written agreement, the the compliance issue and what that looks like, um, the administrator already uh pointed that out. The other question would be, uh, if if there's a determination that there's not compliance, um, who has the authority to uh shut down the league, shut down the team? Um, how do you determine which uh form of punishment is uh appropriate in any given circumstance? That authority would have to be delegated to somebody uh in the county unless the board wants to come back at a at a at a meeting, which, you know, there would be a certain period of time uh and delay or anything like that. Um, so there are lots of logistical issues. Um, can we do it? Sure. Um, it, what I would say is um, these organizers, we take not a lot of responsibility to ensure it uh compliant only by their players, but by all of the parents and other interested spectators at these events. And that might not be as easy as some people think it might.
Okay. I've got uh Commissioner Dozier, you still have the floor. And then I've got Commissioner Minor. Just a heads up, twenty minutes till public hearing, so I want to at least bring this part of the motion in for a landing if we can before we get to the public hearing. So Commissioner Dozier, floor's still yours unless you finished your comments.
Okay. Um, no, Mr. Chair, I, County Administrator and County Attorney make good points that it may not be ea- as easy as we think, but to uh Commissioner Principal Jackson's point, the schools have implemented um some good policies. I am looking at the Little League policy right now, you know, right now. Um, I, I I guess we should have been a little more direct at our last meeting. I I thought this item was gonna, this issue was going to come up at this meeting based on our conversation. And I wish we um had been able to look into these guidelines a little bit more. For the time, the the time crunch that we're under for Little League um and Pop Warner and Babe Ruth, though, I would like to see us move forward with allowing them to do registration and take the next two weeks to work through the guidelines as presented by our various leagues, allow the county attorney and county administrator to reflect on the compliance issues and bring us back something on October thirteenth that is a done deal. I think you've gotten a lot of direction from this board of where we want to see this land, but I don't want to hold up the registration. If we're going to move forward, we got to move for, we got to let the leagues do registration now or else fall sports are done. So let's do that. And I think it's pretty clear that we want to see these guidelines in place, and we want to see some compliance um options. So I I'm going to leave it there, Mr. Chair, but I'm wondering if that is the way we can craft a motion for this moving forward.
Do you want to weigh, you want to weigh back in?
I'm sorry, point of order. Is that an amendment to the substitute motion that is currently on the table?
Um.
I, uh, let me, let me weigh in. I.
Mr. Chair, while I do, if we could let the motion go, and then if we want to bring back that agenda item afterwards, I'm willing to second that it's an item that we bring it back. What I don't, what I don't want, what I don't want here is I don't want to give indication to folks that we're opening it up and taking it back. We're going to open it up, just open it up. But then afterwards, Commissioner Dozier, I'll be the first, I'll be the one to second your motion to to bring that item back so we at least working through uh the the contracts and the things that you that you talked about to make sure folks are doing what we asked them to do or what they said they would do.
Commissioner Maddox.
Okay, Commissioner Maddox.
I forget that, Mr. Chair, I've said since the beginning, I cannot support moving forward unless we have the guidelines in place. And this is, we've been, we've been rounding round about this since June. So I'm really surprised that we, we have to delay it again. We can't delay it again. If we're going to move forward, we can move forward. So I can support the item, but we got, we got to have these guidelines in place. We have to have some agreement and understanding of what we can do with that. So anyhow, I'll let the conference be pointed.
Commissioner, I've got Commissioner Maddox, real quick, on point for you, just as a cleanup here. Going to run is, there was a comment made earlier, the, I think the city, this is, the city opened up playgrounds as part of theirs, which is if you look at the list of items on ours, that might be, unless I hear, I mean, something worth adding in to make it more congruent. I'm not, and but you're the maker of the motion, Commissioner Maddox. And I don't want to confuse things here, but it's con- yeah, it's consistent with what the Parks and Rec's doing now. If you're going to have to back the ballfields, you've got playgrounds.
Okay. Uh, I'll, I'll amend my motion to open up playgrounds specifically, though I'm trying to get to is, is specific to youth sport. Hold on, let me, let me think about this. I I don't, what I want is I want.
Let Vince, let Vince weigh in, because we had some conversations about this, yeah.
Commissioner, again, I'm I'm not trying to sway you uh one one bit. Um, but if you do go with this motion relative to youth sports, uh, we would um uh recommend that you do the same on uh for the playgrounds, open the playgrounds. We would also open them with mitigation in place, uh, but it would provide for consistency with us in the operation of youth sports. The playgrounds are complement to that, and that would help uh us uh to realize some consistency uh in this. And I would just also note, and and Chastity can help me on this, for the purposes of assisting the board here, if you direct us to execute mitigation plans with the leagues, you can give us that direction tonight, and we can do that as part of this uh without the need uh to come back if that's something the board chooses to do.
Okay.
With the understanding that if the board's going to delegate to someone the authority to take some sort of enforcement action, that they would need to ensure that, for example, the county administrator can take that action.
Okay.
Okay. I think that, I think that embodies not only what I was asking for, what I believe what Commissioner Dozier was asking for as well.
I think so.
I'll, I'll go, I'll go with 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 option number two, with what the county administrator said, with Commissioner Dozier's modifications as well with the agenda item to come back. But this, what I'm, what I'm saying here is that what I don't want is, I don't want us to have these people registering their kids, getting all excited about it, and then we come back next meeting and everybody's like, well, I don't like that. Let's, let's not do it anymore.
I think the discussion, yeah, Commissioner Maddox, I think the discussion was that we would delegate the compliance piece and regulatory piece to the administrator so that we don't have to then come back and have a separate discussion. Um, that there's ways to do it, but if we're having to wait for another agenda item in October, I think that's where we run into the problems. And to Commissioner Dozier's point.
Okay, if we're going to, if we're going to do that, what I would like to do is, I would like for for those, that information to come back as soon as, as soon as possible in the way of a status report or something. So.
Sure.
At least, or you can send us an email when you come up with it. So at least we see what you guys are 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 using as those mitigating circumstances and what levels of mitigation comes with them. So if if we can get an email, status report or something, I will feel more comfortable with that. Is that, is that okay?
Okay. Yeah, you, Vince, I've got Commissioner Minor and then Commissioner Proctor, and then I'd like to wind it up. Yeah, yeah. We've got twelve minutes. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be quick. I um, as the last meeting, this has been a very difficult decision, I think, for all of us. Um, my my children are not uh in youth sports yet. But uh, so what I do in that case is I take a look at what Principal Jackson uh has shared with us. Uh, you know, as, and I, this is all public knowledge, but, you know, if anyone knows the effects of COVID uh on this board, it's Commissioner Jackson um and his family. Uh, he's also a a principal, a very successful one who cares very much about his kids. Uh, and so um, that bears a lot of weight on this decision for me. Um, and hearing Commissioner Maddox talk about um, um, you know, his youth sports as a boy, I mean, these, these are very important issues for a lot of kids, especially, as Commissioner Jackson says, in the unincorporated areas. Um, so I I wasn't sure where I was going to go until I heard a lot of your discussion amongst yourselves and amongst all of us. Um, but given Commissioner Maddox's uh motion about the mitigation plans, county administrator's going to oversee those, uh, addressing a lot of Commissioner Dozier's concerns, uh, I'm at the point now where I can support this. So I I'll be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Proctor, and then let's wind it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Chairman, I have tried uh to um learn how to get along with everybody, and I'm still learning. And I'd do anything to get along with Commissioner uh Maddox. And tonight I may not um get along. But I look at this issue, my mother taught me some years ago that when you're washing clothes, that you don't, you don't mix up the white clothes and the and the colored clothes. And uh, as I see this issue uh simplified, what we've been trying to do is keep the white clothes with the white clothes. But um Governor DeSantis and President, um, President, uh, they drop in colored clothes by changing the standards, preempting our rules, and just messing up the whole wash. Now, uh, to our county attorney, it it's clear to me that Miami-Dade is a different kind, and use your your word, uh, Mr. Chairman, a rock star county commission because because they do stuff irrespective of the mentality or absence of one from the governor or the White House. Miami-Dade makes orders and ordinances that they think is in the interest of their community, and they don't care who don't like it and what they say. I kind of like that about them. But we are mixing up clothes here now. And what we've tried to follow, Commissioner, the white clothes has been the pursuit of help. The colored clothes is in the pursuit of fun and happiness. As we watch the white clothes and try to keep the white clothes in this laundry together, we have tried to follow science because this pandemic is deadly. I can't support this because there is no conclusion from science. The CDC and the White House is arguing. The CDC had a set of testing kits. Now the White House with no science in it, they don't believe in it. The White House is sending out tests, and they're not even a scientific nothing and don't believe in it. So if we put the colored clothes in the wash, we're listening to our friends, our coaches, our parents, and we're going by our hearts and happiness and the word children, and I believe that those are wonderful things. But we have to balance those commissioners and not let our hearts lead the way, but let our minds lead the way and make sure that we are segregating the white clothes for health, safety, and welfare of our community. I can't support it because what I have read everywhere is that when these kids become infected, black children are going to catch it at a greater rate and likely die and likely take it home to somebody who's more susceptible, and they're going to die. So I'm for hearts and happiness, parents and coaches. But right now, I don't think we should throw the tennis shoes in there with the white clothes. That's what we're doing. We're dropping our guards, and we should follow our minds, even though we're getting, we're getting less results. That's because we're doing less testing. And as we get closer to the election, the numbers are going down mysteriously. I have been willing and said the last time, let the cross-country people go out there and be the canaries in the mine. They grown, they old, they begging to go. Let them go. But I'm not willing to let Little League children and their parents and the happiness of hearts and photo op go down like that. We have to provide for health, safety, and welfare of children. So I think that Commissioner Linley has felt this way, and I don't know who else, but I want the white clothes not to be all messed up with these ideas of a governor who's dropping colored clothes in the wash. We're trying to keep the white clothes clean and to give our children safety. And everybody who's supposed to be in charge of science, they are not telling the truth, and you know it. We don't know where this disease is going to go. Keep our foot on the brake. We don't know. This is a deadly situation. It's a million people dead. There's a whole lot of people sick. This is not the time to get all caught up emotionally. This is a time that we remain cognitive and tough mentally. And I ask you not to support this and try to maintain our white clothes in the white clothes department, which is health and safety, and not get it all mixed up with other stuff. And all due respect to Commissioner Maddox's appreciation in reference to his background and what sports did for him, I'm appreciative of it. You're right. But in a pandemic, you did not play in. But these children, they will be playing in the midst of something totally different environmentally. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. I've got Commissioner Dozier and then Commissioner Jackson, but we're going to run out of time here. So I'd ask you to be brief. Commissioner Dozier?
Yes, sir. Not to try to unpack our laundry right now. Moving forward, I am very concerned with where we are, public health, how we've gotten here. But youth sports for our local kids can be handled in a different way. I don't think I'm going to be able to support the cost country item any more than I was two weeks ago. And, Mr. Chair, I'm anticipating we're going to get into that after the public hearing at this point. But just to put an exclamation point on this, I have more problems with bringing 1,200 people into our community for a race. That seems riskier than allowing a Little League or a Pop Warner team to compete who are our school kids. So it is the only reason why I've gotten here. And my attempt earlier, and I really chime back in because there was so much discussion, Commissioner Maddox, about your motion. You had gone one way, saying we would talk about the guidelines later, and I was just hoping that you could reframe your motion. You did say that.
Vince has got.
Guidelines, is that right, Commissioner Maddox?
Yeah. Go ahead, Vince.
Mr. Chairman, if it would be helpful, Commissioners, because there was a, there's a lot there. But I'll read to you what we've got, and of course, you could provide any clarification to us. The motion, as amended, is option two, and it is as follows. To revise Phase Two of the Leon County COVID-19 Response and Reopening Plan to allow for youth sports and playgrounds, require leagues to submit mitigation plans and direct the county attorney to execute an agreement with the leagues whereby the leagues agree to take responsibility for the mitigation plans with penalties and delegate the responsibility to enforce that agreement with the county administrator and provide the board with updates.
That, Nick? Okay, then I'm the second, so that's good. Commissioner Dozier, does that answer your questions?
Yes.
I've got Commissioner Jackson still in line, but go ahead if you want, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, it does answer the question. I can support the motion. Even though playgrounds was a little bit of an odd step, that did not come up in our briefing. I'm willing to walk with it for now, to use Commissioner Proctor's phrase. But I wasn't prepared for that one, and I thought that was, would be discussed later. So I can go with it so long as it doesn't expand any further. I just want to acknowledge, I did get something about the city having a waiver of liability and acknowledgement. I understand that that is what some are doing. That may be part of the ultimate solution here, but I think those guidelines and that agreement are, that's what I was focused on, and I like the way the motion is framed right now. So thank you all for the long, robust discussion.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, just so there's no surprises, I am going to support the motion. Or I believe that after hearing my fellow Commissioners and after hearing you as well, Commissioner Proctor, I cannot respect your comments anymore as a person who works for young people. But I want to make it very clear, I'm going to support it before we go into this thing. I don't like there to be surprises when we get into voting. I believe that the work can be done, just like the work has been done at Leon County Schools. And if it proves not to work, we reserve the right to shut down the operation immediately. Or if our rate gets out of that 6.65 range, we know that we can do things here as a county. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. We have a motion by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by myself. Many thanks to the parents, coaches, players, who we all heard from for the last couple of weeks. Nice job. All in favor of the motion as described by the Administrator, put forward by Commissioner Maddox, signify by saying aye. Aye. I've got all opposed.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries 5-2 by my count, with Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Linley in opposition. The substitute motion, pardon me, nice job. We have public hearings in one minute, okay? I'm going to take a quick bio break. Can you guys play music or mingle for a minute? Is that okay?